I would like to call to order the July 20, 2021, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you kindly call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Peter Piffco.
Present.
Debra Range.
Present.
Andres Perdello. Let the record reflect that Andres Perdello is not present. John Hicksonbaugh. Let the record reflect that John Hicksonbaugh is not present. Kathleen Ward.
Present.
The next order of business is approval of the June 15, 2021 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I move for approval of the minutes.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those of favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff.
Let the record reflect that John Hicksonbaugh is present.
Oh, welcome, John.
Evening, Planning Board members. Angela Van Penning is on and administrator. I was going to give you a brief update of the cases that basically were heard by the City Commission since the last Planning Board meeting in June. This was for the June 28 Planning Board meeting, the commission, excuse me, commission meeting. They voted five zero of approval of the case and Planning Board, you heard this on March 16, 2021. And this was the military break annexation, support seven acre site, which was in an unincorporated Palm Beach County, surrounded basically by Peggy Adams Rescue League, has an existing automotive, automotive repair shop use. And basically, the City Commission voted to approve the annexation and it had assigned commercial land use with general commercial land use designation. Next case was for July 12, 2021 by the City Commission. It was approved four to zero. And Planning Board, you heard this one in May 18, 2021, and you approved it by five zero vote. And this was a boutique hotel downtown. And this was to allow boutique hotels in the eligible Quadra Business District 8-25 and 10-25 as shown in the purple areas. It's also reduced to minimum room size for boutique hotels. And that's basically concludes staff report of what the Commission has approved since the last Planning Board meeting. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, thank you. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson. And it is with pleasure that I announce the appointment of our newest board member, Kathleen Ward. Ms. Ward is a graduate of Rollins College and St. Thomas University School of Law. She's an attorney with Ward Damon, where she practices in areas of commercial lending, real estate, contracts, and corporate law. Ms. Ward, for the past six years, has chaired the North End Coalition of Neighborhoods and holds leadership positions with Neighborhood Renaissance, Economic Council of Palm Beach County, and Community Alliance of Palm Beach. We thank you for all your volunteer service and welcome to Planning Board. Next on the agenda, our declaration of ex parte communications. Let me begin by disclosing that I spoke with Harvey Oyer, who's counsel for Jeffrey Green concerning Planning Board case number 1859A and 1859B. I have also received a dozen or so emails and letters from residents concerning the same case. Copies of those emails and residence were forwarded to the clerk and will be made a part of the official record of these proceedings. None of these communications will prevent me from deciding these cases solely based upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? Let me start on this side. John?
Director Hood?
Yeah. It helps.
This is my first time appearing at a live meeting because I was appointed during the pandemic. I too had received 13 emails regarding the cases on today's agenda. I did not engage in any conversation in those emails. I don't participate in ex parte communications, and I will forward those to the clerk so that they can be made part of the record. They will not influence my taking of testimony or decision making this evening.
Thank you so much. Peter?
I also received approximately 13 emails, but my decisions will be based on the evidence presented tonight.
Thank you. Debra?
I also received several emails. However, my decision will be based on the evidence presented.
I also received close to 20 emails on this, and my decision will be based on the evidence presented tonight.
Thank you so much. All right, next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That brings us then to Planning Board case number 1859A, 1859B, and the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Rick Green, Development Services Director, and I too would like to welcome Ms. Ward to the board. Thank you for your service. What I'd like to do today, we're going to tag team this presentation, myself and Lynda Louie, but I'll begin talking about the location, the history of Seamud, talk about current conditions. I'll discuss some of the proposed revisions, specifically as it refers to building sub-districts, building height, and building incentives. We'll then turn it over to Lynda. We'll talk about zoning and land development regulations. I'll then pick up and talk about the schedule and then certainly open it up for any questions. I'll let the board and the public know that we presented a, we had a mayor discussion, mayor, City Commission discussion back on February 16 of this year, seeking direction on a lot of the issues that are before you tonight. So based on that direction that we got from the City Commission, we're bringing these items forward for your consideration, and then obviously we'll go back to the City Commission. So just to provide a little context, the Seamud area is about 65 acres located between Flagler Drive and North Dixie Highway, between roughly 27th Street on the north and Pine Street to the south. You've got the La Fontana and Portofino condominiums at the very north end, 10-story buildings built in 1961 and 68 respectively. So to provide a little history, the Seamud stands for the Commercial Mixed Use District, was created as a transition between the single-family uses to the north, Northwood Village to the west, and the professional offices to the south. At that time, back in 2002, we allowed four-story buildings with a two-story incentive. That program expired on my birthday in 2008. In 2014, we had a week-long series of meetings, a seven-day public visioning with residents of Northwood to talk about what they saw for the Curry Mixed Use District. And there were several meetings that took place within that seven-day period. We brought the changes and recommendations from that visioning process to the City Commission, and they in turn approved the comprehensive plan amendments and text amendments to our zoning and land development regulations, which again is a fancy name for our zoning code. So what came out of that adoption in November of 2014 were the creation of three sub-districts within the Seamud. So you had the Edge, which consisted of three and four-story product reflected in the green color at the northwest area of Seamud. You had a Transition District reflected in the blue, which allowed between six and 12 stories. And then you had a Core District reflected in the red, which allowed between 18 and 15 stories in height. So again, you see the specific height restrictions that were embedded. Again, the Edge, three and four stories. The Transition was six, 10, and 12 stories. And in the Core District, 15 stories in height. And again, as part of this amendment in 2014, we offered bonuses if certain incentives were met. So for instance, if a developer built a building and built the building to meet a LEED certification, they were given an additional four floors in height. If they did public parking that would serve Curry Park, if they built a supermarket, if they did green roofs, public open spaces, building vistas, et cetera, they were allowed or afforded additional height. What's very important to note that as part of that amendment, in part particularly the comprehensive plan amendment, what was approved by the state was that a maximum number of 4,065 residential units and no more than 2.3 million square feet of retail or commercial could be built within the entirety of Seamud. That is not changing with the amendment that is before you tonight. So that remains intact. And I'll, you'll see that throughout the entire presentation. And then what was permitted as part of this amendment, you see the base height, and then we have show, or we show the maximum height with incentives. So the Edge allowed three to four stories in height between 36 and 60 feet. The Transition, again with incentives, could go up to 160 feet. And then the Core District could go up to 15 or a total of 195 feet. So currently, you see the Seamud District outlined in red, 27th Street to the north, Pine Street to the south, the buffer. You have the Broadway Mixed Use District a little to the west. You have the Northwood Mixed Use District directly to the west of Seamud. We have been working, as you may know, with the Community Redevelopment Agency, and Allison will speak a little bit later, regarding the development of an anchor site at the west end of Northwood Road. Our intention is to basically connect the anchor site to Curry Park. So like Clematis Street, have an extension that would connect the anchor site to the west and Curry Park to the east. And we're calling that the Northwood Road Extension. As you may know, we're also in the process of redeveloping Curry Park. We have a consulting work, working on a plan right now, and we've got several million dollars outlaid for the redevelopment of that park and make it more user-friendly. And then to the north, you have the La Fontana and Portofino condominium, and you'll, you'll be hearing from residents there, I'm sure, tonight. The one project that has been developed more recently is Neil Kosikoff's 312, Northwood Development. It's a four-story apartment, just over 100 units, and that's on the west side, close to Dixie Highway. So in recent years, Jeff Green began acquiring property within the Seamud District. He has approximately $40 million in land that he has acquired, has a pop of value of about 35 million. I suspect that that probably has gone up with the new assessments that were done. Again, about 20 total acres, and these are all the properties that he now controls. You see it highlighted in the blue color in relation to all of Seamud. And as I mentioned, a property of 35 million. Most of the properties were purchased between 2012 and 2016. They account for almost half of the total Seamud area. And then Mr. Green has retained the services of an architectural firm out of Switzerland, one of the most prestigious firms out there, named Herzog and De Meuren. This is a sample of some of the work that they've done, not to suggest that this is what they're building here, but they've done work all over the world. So as part of the revisions, we started working with Mr. Green's consultants. And again, with the directive of the City Commission back in February, we started looking at things like the sub-districts we had in place, building heights, incentives, how we're going to handle Northwood Road setbacks, the location of buildings on the parcels, and then what permitted uses we would have. And again, in the workshop we had on the 16th, these were the major items that we discussed, whether we should move forward with an increase in height, whether we should add a fourth sub-district, whether we should use feet in lieu of stories to measure the heights of buildings, and then what new incentives we may entertain. Now, part of the goal when we began working on the Seamud revisions, as Lynda will attest to later in this presentation, is what we wanted to do is simplify the regulations of the Seamud District. Again, as I mentioned, we didn't want to alter the development capacity that exists today, and we wanted to provide a mechanism to achieve the greater height that the Commission asked us to move forward with, but based on incentives that would benefit not only the immediate neighborhood, but the surrounding neighborhood as well. The current code as it exists today has a series of building typologies, as you see here, I won't go through them, but that caused the zoning code to be a little bit more difficult to understand. So part of our effort is to try to simplify a lot of what's in place right now. So with regard to the building sub-districts, again, I mentioned the three earlier, the Edge, the Transition, and the Core. So what we've done is the Edge District, for the most part, remains intact, as the, as does the Transition District. But the Core District, which consisted of everything you see in the pink, we split into two sub-districts, so you have a Core Two and a Core One. The Core One are primarily those larger parcels that abut Flagler Drive. And the major change is embedded in the formation of the Core One District. Again, I'll reiterate that the number of units and non-residential square feet remains the same. We're not altering that, not amending the comprehensive plan. And there's a small parcel that's in the middle, actually, it's a large parcel, that's owned Professional Office Residential Plan Development. So it's owned PD, so it would be guided under the regulations of the plan development. The owner of that property, which happens to be Mr. Green, can also come back and request that the core zoning be applied to that parcel as well. But as of now, he wants to leave it as planned development. So the major changes, looking at the existing to the left is what it's in place right now with the existing zoning code, and what's proposed is on the right. It's important to note that nothing north of 26th Street is being proposed to change. So where La Fontana is, Portofino, the Edge, and the Transition Districts remain intact. The one block that I have encircled, we are simply amending the boundary to reflect the existing parcel boundary lines that exist today. So no major changes other than reflecting what's in place now, and that transition mirrors the parcel that's, that's shown there. The big change, of course, is the former Core District is now split into Core Two and Core One. So what you see highlighted in yellow is what's going from the old Core District, Sub-District, to the Core One. And that's the one that allows you to go up to 397 feet. And only these, these three parcels could go to that height. So again, you have the Edge, again, up to 60 feet in height, the Transition up to 163 feet in the blue. The Core Two is the red, which allows up to 202 feet of height. And in the Core One are the three parcels that allow up to 397. And again, I'll repeat the residential and non-residential. So we have a table in the proposed code change that shows the maximum permitted height. So you see the base height of the four sub-districts, and to the right, you see the maximum permitted height. You're able to achieve that maximum permitted height by addressing any one of the 11 incentives that we have in place, or that what we are proposing tonight. So the assumption that was made was that the first floor would be 20 feet in height, floor to ceiling. We're not limiting the developer to that height, but using that as a starting point. Then the remaining 29 floors of a 30-story building would be 13 feet in height, and that's how we arrived at the 397 feet for a 30-story building. Again, if a developer chooses a smaller floor-to-ceiling plate, if he goes 12 stories, he could fit 32 stories there. If he does 11, he could go to 35. If he does 10, then he could go to 38. But the directive we received from the Commission back in February was let's use feet instead of height, so we're not worried about the floor-to-ceiling numbers. So again, this is just again a diagram of the heights of the Edge Transition, Core Two, and Core One. When you compare that with 2014, you see that the maximum heights under the Edge and Transition remain fairly intact. You go, the 60 feet remains the same for the Edge. The Transition, based on the floor-to-ceiling numbers I just showed, go from only 160 to 163. And then the Core, which became the Core Two, only increases from 195 to 202. The big change, of course, is the Core One, which goes up to 397 on those three yellow parcels to the right. Now, this is an analysis that we did. It has nothing to do with Seamud, but obviously trying to understand the rationale for a developer wanting to go high. So this is the Bristol Development, again, not within Seamud, south of downtown, but it's an interesting analysis, and obviously it's very intuitive to all of you. But what we looked at were the building heights and the sale prices of the unit. The building has 68 units. It's entirely sold. So when you look at the first five floors of building, you see that the average unit sold for just over $6 million. When you move up to the second tier of five-story increments, between the 10th and 15th floor, you see that there was a 12% increase in sale price. So that went up from 6 million to almost 6.8 million. That happens to be the current maximum height under the Seamud regulations today. When you go up to the next increment of five at the Bristol, again, this is a site-specific analysis, then you see that the price goes up to 55%. And then if you go to the top five floors between 21 and 25, that jumps up to a whopping 148%. So obviously, what the developer appears to seek is the height, which again affords him more views, in this case of the intercoastal and of the ocean. So with regard to the building incentives, these are the incentives that I touched upon earlier in the presentation. This is what's in place now in the zoning code. We have proposed a new table with a total of 11 incentives, so we've expanded the amount of incentives. So the table 7-6 in these proposed zoning code would identify the sub-district, the base height, the maximum height, and then the incentives that would be available with both a minimum and a maximum. So again, you've got the districts to the top, and then again, a developer would choose the, the incentive that he or she wishes to achieve in order to get the increased height that they desire. So I'll quickly run through these, beginning with Northwood Road. As I mentioned earlier, there has been a desire on the part of the city, the CRA, and even Mr. Green, as part of the master plan that was done by Herzog and De Meuren, that they shared with the city, to extend Northwood Road from the west through Seamud and, and to Curry Park. So if you kind of see an overlay of just the very preliminary conceptual design of what this would look like, again, you'd have the anchor site to the west, you'd have Northwood Road fully extended across Dixie Highway through Seamud and into Curry Park. And again, you can line that road with amenities, with shops, what have you. So the incentives that we're offering is that for every $25,000 worth of value of construction of that roadway, we would offer a developer one foot of height, up to 130 feet of height. If the extension of this roadway is not completed, if a developer is building a building and it's not completed, then we would ask that the difference in the work that is outstanding be bonded at a capacity of 110% to ensure that the work on the roadway got completed. And then we're also suggesting that if a developer is building along that portion of Seamud that abuts Northwood Road, at a minimum, they would have to provide the minimum extension in order to utilize that incentive for the additional height. So this is a way to help the city and the CRA fund the improvement of that Northwood Road extension. The second one is the workforce housing incentive. Now, we, we presented something to you a while back that just went to the Commission at the last meeting for downtown. This is a similar incentive that we're asking a developer that if they provide 0.2% of workforce housing for their development, they would be afforded additional height. And the purpose here is to try to make housing a little bit more affordable for the teachers, the firefighters. It's not affordable housing, it's workforce housing. So it's typically in the range of 60 to 100% of the area median income. This would benefit, we did an analysis of all city employees, roughly 1,500 employees, 70% of city employees would fall into this category. So it's trying to provide more workforce housing for people. So again, the developer has the incentive to provide those units within the building that he's building. And again, the greater percentage that they provide, the greater height they would achieve. A second option is they could do a buyout based on the construction valuation table that my building division uses every, every day for each unit that they're required to build. Or thirdly, they could provide workforce housing within a two-mile radius of the project. When we did this for the downtown, we said that that workforce housing had to be provided downtown. So when you look at two miles from Curry Park, you see that it covers a wide range, includes most of Northwood to the north, doesn't quite hit Congress Avenue, but fairly close. And you can see that it's a wide range. So again, this would be an opportunity for a developer to provide workforce housing outside of Seamud or even within Seamud. And then the specific regulations of that program, we would lay out in a separate document that we would bring back at a later date. The third incentive is certainly one of the city and the CRA's goals, is to move forward with improvements to Curry Park. So again, this certainly would benefit a developer whose property is, is fronting or facing Curry Park. So again, with additional credit could be provided if a developer helps us fund the necessary improvements that the city and the CRA desire for Curry Park. D would be the creation of a food store or supermarket. This was incentive, an incentive that's in place now. There's a great need for a grocery store on the north end. So again, we're providing an incentive that if a developer does either a minimum 15,000 square foot food store or grocery store, or a larger one at 30,000 square feet, again, a height incentive would be offered. And again, this is an incentive to try to lure a developer to work with a grocery store to move into Curry Park and serve the north end. Item E is an incentive for public parking for Curry Park. There's, the previous incentive was to actually help with the funding of the improvements. This is to provide public parking, whether it's for the boat ramp, whether it's for visitors to the park. And again, the developer could provide that parking within the building that he or she is building. If it's in the Core One and Two area, which is closer to Curry Park, we would ask for a bigger incentive. If it's a little further away in the Transition District, we're saying 7% have to be for Curry Park parking. And again, we're asking that that parking be unrestricted to the public and be located on the first floor for ease of travel to and from Curry Park. And again, a payment in lieu of option could be provided. And then mobility options is another one. This is something that we're focusing on in downtown. We would create a mobility fund. Our goal and desire, we would love to have a trolley system that runs through Seamud. So this incentive would help fund the expansion of the trolley system we have downtown into Seamud. In addition, we could also use it for car pools, van pool, and car share programs, which we have downtown, electric vehicle charging stations, bike sharing stations. And again, so that incentive is in place to promote mobility. The LEED certi, excuse me, the LEED certification we have in place, again, if they do a platinum, which is a little bit more stringent, we would allow it in additional 40 feet in height. And again, gold would be 30. There has been a suggestion by some folks that we've spoken to about adding a silver designation as well, so maybe we could do that with a 20-foot height incentive for silver. And then public open spaces throughout Seamud, in addition to what we're proposing in Curry Park, we would provide an incentive for providing small mini parks, if you will, throughout Seamud. And again, whether it's 4,800 or 9,600, it would allow a developer additional height if those additional open spaces could be provided for the public. We're not offering that in the Core One Sub-District, given its proximity to Curry Park across the street. So the way this would work, I'm not suggesting this is a building that's proposed, but presuming that a developer wanted to build a 343-foot tall building, the way it would work, they would start with a base amount, in this case, in the Core One District, a 111-foot starting point. If they wanted to provide public parking for Curry Park, they would pick up 52 feet of height. If they wanted to address the workforce housing requirement, they would provide, or they would be offered another 75 feet in height. If they did a grocery store, then they would get another 65 feet in height. And then if they did the LEED Platinum, they would get another 40. So they can mix and match how they choose to arrive at the chosen height that they seek. And again, it doesn't have to be at the ultimate height, but whatever height they need, we would have these 11 incentives in place that they would choose from. So at this point, let me turn it over to Lynda Louie, who will go through the zoning and land development regulations.
Good evening. Lynda Louie, senior planner, for the record. The purpose for amending the Seamud Text Regulations and Zoning Map is to simplify and incorporate new regulations to stimulate growth and development activity within the district, but also to maintain predictability, consistency, and compatibility within the district and the surrounding area, and with the city's comprehensive plan and the CRA's vision for Seamud. The changes will affect Section 94209, the Mixed Use District, and Section 94215, the Curry Mixed Use District of the ZLDRs, as well as the zoning map. So just to quickly summarize the changes to Section 94215, which is the Curry Mixed Use District Regulations, I'll go over some of the key changes later on in my presentation, but in a nutshell, the changes will include the elimination of building typologies, street vistas, and urban greenways to remove the complexities of these regulations in the current code, provide regulations and additional incentives for increasing building height, create sub-district requirements in tabular format for each sub-district, amend the permitted use table to address the creation of the Core One and Core Two Sub-Districts, modify the regulating plans to address the proposed changes to the sub-districts, and the inclusion of the Northwood Road Extension, and address general inconsistencies and conflicts and reorganization of the Seamud Regulations for a better flow. So in addition to the changes provided or proposed in the Seamud Text Section, the Mixed Use Section- section, which is Section 94209, will also be amended for consistency with the changes to Section 94215. The mixed-use district section of the code provides the general regulations for all the mixed-use districts within the city. So for these changes for consistency with the Seamud regulations, the definitions section of the code will be changed as it relates to measuring building heights in Seamud. The height standard section will also be amended to exempt Seamud from the building height limitations by stories, and the building configuration and design section as it relates to the tower floor plate setbacks for any building form with a tower and building, sorry, tower and podium form within Seamud. The proposed changes will also impact the zoning map, and that will impact the changes to the area within Seamud boundary to reflect the proposed sub-districts. So now going on to the key changes of the ZLDRs, one of the major changes within the existing code is the elimination of the building typologies. Staff has recognized that the building typologies formats and requirements are too restrictive and not easy to understand, and does not offer a lot of flexibility. So for example, the building typologies that are listed in the code section are only, are the building forms that are only permitted within Seamud. Staff had also noticed inconsistencies with the building requirements, and that has made it impossible to redevelop on certain parcels within Seamud. And that includes, for example, the text regulations were found to be inconsistent with some of the diagrams, which created a lot of confusion, and the minimal dimensional requirements for the building typologies requirements, such as a lot depth and depth requirements, made it impossible to redevelop on a lot of the smaller parcels within the district. So in order to resolve this issue, staff is proposing to incorporate sub-districts building requirements in a tabular format. The table will address building heights and setbacks, open space, active use, and transparency requirements. The table will also establish minimum and maximum building setbacks to strengthen the building relationship to the street and encourage pedestrian-friendly spaces and active use spaces. The purpose of the tables is to provide regulations that emphasize the building envelope, which should offer greater development and design flexibility. Okay, so another important element of the code amendment is the active use and predictability. So currently, active uses are dictated by the building typologies. Certain building types require ground floor active uses. This requirement creates inconsistency with the predictability of active uses within the district. So in order to address this, staff has identified northwest and east, north-south and east-west roadways that are generally more active and commercial in nature, and these streets will be designated active use corridors. So these streets include Dixie Highway, the Northwood Road Extension, Butler Street, and 26th Street. These will require active uses at the ground level of the buildings fronting along these streets, and these requirements will help to establish consistency with active uses along the more prominent streets within the district. As part of the amendment, new open spaces will be created. This includes the Linear Parkway just south of the proposed Northwood Road extension. In order to accommodate the Northwood Road extension, some reconfiguration of the existing Joel Daves Park, as well as the elimination of Bethesda terrorists, has to occur, and that'll help create the Linear Park. This creates a green east-west connection to Curry Park. Another proposed new open space under the proposed amendments is the Flagler Drive Parkway System, which is a 30-foot-wide parkway easement to be provided along all properties fronting on Flagler Drive. The Parkway System design includes a 10-foot-wide meandering multipurpose pathway, and the purpose of the Parkway System is to extend the physical connection of Curry Park to Seamud. In addition, oops, sorry, I wanted to add that. In addition to the new open spaces created by the proposed text amendment, Curry Park will continue to offer recreational opportunities in close proximity to the district, and new development projects within the Core Two, as well as the transition sub-districts, will also be required to provide minimum open space. So the permitted use table will also be amended to accommodate the Core One and Core Two sub-districts. It's important to note that the existing uses permitted by right, prohibited uses permitted with extra requirements in the existing sub-districts under the current regulations will not change. So this is just a tweaking to accommodate the Core One and Core Two sub-districts. So to conclude my portion of the presentation, I just wanted to quickly go over the proposed text amendment and consistency. Staff believes that the proposed text amendment is consistent with CRA's vision for Seamud. Planning staff has met with the CRA on numerous occasions to identify their priorities, and the regulations, the proposed regulations incorporates the Northwood Road extension, as well as regulations to accommodate pedestrian-friendly and active use spaces. Staff also finds that it's consistent with the purpose and intent of the mixed-use future land use designation. It promotes a mixture of residential and non-residential land uses that are complementary to each other and functionally integrated, consistent with future land use element policy 1.7.2.3, which identifies Seamud as a compact, dense, pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use district maintained by setbacks, parking requirements, location, height limitations, permitted uses. These regulations are incorporated in the proposed text. And finally, amendment and rezoning standards of the ZLDRs, and that analysis is included in the attached staff report. Now back to Rick to go over the schedule.
Thank you, Lynda. So just to provide a kind of an update of where we are schedule-wise, back on March 8th, we transmitted the comprehensive plan amendment. So that was submitted on first reading, approved by commission on first reading, transmitted to the state, and those are some of the things that Lynda just touched upon. DEO, the Department of Economic Opportunity, that reviews the comprehensive plan amendment, acknowledged receipt of the comp plan transmittal on March 17th. We had a Zoom meeting during COVID on April 14th to discuss the proposed zoning and land development amendments. We presented this to the CRA Advisory Board on June 25th, and we're before you today to discuss these same amendments. And then we suspect that in August and September, we'll be in front of the City Commission for reading of both the comp plan and the zoning and land development regulations. So really what's necessitating this, I'm providing an overview of the areas between October 14th, right after, or right around the time we adopted the last Seamud amendments in November of 2014 versus where we are just approximately a year ago. And you can see there's been no noticeable change in the development patterns within Seamud over that six-year period. So part of what we're trying to do is incentivize development to take place in this area because it's remained vacant and dormant for too long. So our hope is that with the incentives that we are providing with the additional height, no increase in residential development, no increase in retail or commercial development, along with the completion of the improvements to Curry Park, will hopefully, you know, energize this entire area, and then we will hopefully see and anticipate some development. I would be remiss if I did not mention that, you know, one of the concerns that staff has, and while it's not addressed in your report, something that I will certainly discuss with the commission, is Jeff Green's desire to move forward with the project. Again, he owns a lot of the land in this area. You don't see some of the projects that come into the downtown because that goes to our downtown action committee, but Mr. Green has had a project approved at Clematis Place dating back to 2014, which has not begun. Banyan Place, next to the police station, in 2017, which has not begun. A project you did see back in 2019 was Clear Lake Estates. That project has since expired. He never moved forward with that. And again, One West Palm, where he halted construction for a year during the pandemic. So the question that we will pose, and certainly would welcome your feedback, is do we want to impose a limitation on these incentives? Because we need him to do something, given he's the biggest property owner in this area. So rather than have it open-ended, if we provide a time limit on the incentives, maybe we can see some realization of him moving forward. So just a thought, something I wanted to bounce back you. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, we've been working very closely with the CRA. Allison Justice is here, and she may want to just mention a couple of words.
Why don't we hear from her, and then we'll have questions for the two of you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Allison Justice, Deputy Director of the West Palm Beach CRA. Very brief, I just wanted to reiterate what Rick and Lynda had said. We've been working very close with planning staff on this. Obviously, we led the effort back in 2014 for the initial changes. One of the things from the CRA perspective, obviously, that we think is very important for these changes are the incentives. You know, whatever happens with the changes here, we want to make sure that it benefits the neighborhood, the north end, and in particular, the Northwood Business District. And that is a, that is a major focus of the West Palm Beach CRA. And any development along Seamud should address the business district to the west, you know, along with those changes. So that's what we worked very hard to do when we worked with the planning staff on these incentives. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Peter?
Rick, I have a question for you. I noticed that the last meeting with the community was back in 2014, and then you had another meeting in April. How extensive was the community advertised?
We advertised extensively. What we found out, in some cases, I don't know if it was a result of the pandemic, but we sent our notices out in what we thought was a timely fashion. In some cases, there were delays by the postal service, and what we heard from some residents was that they didn't get the notice in time for the Zoom meeting that we had. We did have some attendance at the meeting, so we did talk and went through a similar presentation like we did tonight, and we received input from a lot of the residents that were on the call.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. John, any questions of staff?
Not at this.
Okay. Deborah?
Kathleen. You mentioned timeline. Have you thought at all about what type of timeline, a year, two years, to get things moving?
We were thinking internally, and certainly we welcome any input, but we were thinking about five years, thinking that, you know, if and when these changes get amended, it would probably take an architect approximately six months to design a building. It would have to come back through this body for approval. No, no, it would, it would, actually, if it met the requirements, it would not. They'd submit for building permit. We would hopefully turn that around pretty quickly, but if it's a large building, certainly there's going to be some back and forth. So it would probably be a year to design the building and get through permitting. So that would certainly afford a developer an additional three to four years to actually build the building. But we certainly would welcome any feedback from the board.
And then also, so for purposes of Curry Park, because obviously I know that a lot of that has been funded, and there's plans that have moved forward, you guys have gotten grants, it's an excellent process that has involved the community. Where does Green fit into that additional funds? And then obviously, it goes back to CRAB to be approved in the event that they did want to put money towards that?
It would be CRAB and the City Commission, and I don't want to put Allison on the spot, but what was proposed for Curry Park was a scaled-down version of the original plan that was done. So if you will, imagine you have a great plan, and then you have a greater plan. So part of the thought was that if we do the base plan, which would be several million dollars in cost, the thought was that maybe we could achieve even a higher level, or maybe do things that weren't contemplated on the original plan.
The original plan that the community didn't like?
The original plan that's moving forward now, that, I'll let Allison discuss the specifics.
Sure, thank you. The plan right now that was just, that was just approved by the, by the CRA Board and the City Commission is approximately a $45 million plan. We have 20 some-odd million funded. There, we're looking for another 11.7, I think, in grants right now. So that is already...
That's the original plan, not like the prior part?
Right, so that's already designed. So the thoughts for improvements to Curry Park were things that couldn't get into the plan. So if there are things the community wants to see additionally, it would be above and beyond anything that was in that, in that, in that plan.
Okay. So the current plan?
Correct, the current plan.
Rick, another question. When is the next review of the comp plan? Let's, how many years away?
Evaluation and appraisal report, or the review for the specific item?
For the state, no, for the state.
For the state. Alex, is it?
I'm just thinking about timelines, you know? Whether we can tie that into the timeline.
It's, the EARs, I want to say about four or five years, right?
Well, if you're talking about the...
Introduce yourself.
Good evening. Alex Hansen, City Comprehensive Planner. The amendments to the Curry mixed-use district were already sent to the state, to DEO. We already got their comments. So right now, we're only waiting for the processing of the zoning regulations, which is what you're seeing tonight. And then the idea is to eventually adopt both the comp plan amendments and second hearing, and then have the two hearings for these amendments with the City Commission at the same time. So the second reading for comp plan will be the same date as the second reading for the zoning regulations. We're talking late August, early September right now.
Okay. Thanks. All right, any other questions of staff? And if not, I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas a question. I understand we got a request.
Yes, sir. I received a letter from attorney Harvey Oyer, who's requested some additional time for a presentation. He's indicated that he represents a client, I think that is Mr. Green, who owns a substantial amount of land in the area that would be affected by this action. The courts have determined that in that instance, persons who own property affected in this manner enjoy certain constitutional protections. Among them is certainly the opportunity to be heard. These decisions are often made in quasi-judicial proceedings where decisions are made, but while this is a quasi-legislative proceeding, he still has those interests, and they still enjoy those protections. Accordingly, I would recommend, if he is requesting some additional time, that the Board consider awarding that time. How much would be in the discretion of the Board?
All right. Mr. Oyer, how much time are you seeking?
Good evening. I'm not quite sure. I'm guessing 15 minutes max.
Okay. Does anyone have an objection to the 15 minutes on the recommendation of counsel? Any? Kathleen, any objection? John, any? All right. We'll award you 15 minutes, sir.
Thank you. Now, it's just a matter of finding if it's on the computer. Rick, do you know which one is yours versus which one is mine?
That one's mine. I'm guessing that's yours. I don't recognize it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. For the record, Harvey Oyer of Shutt and Bone, on behalf of Jeff Green, who is the property owner of about 50% of the Seamud District and most of the undeveloped land. And in fact, I would say we're here in large part because of his request two years ago, which culminated in a public meeting attended by approximately 100 people on April 5th, 2019, with the proposal that is now before you in the form of a code change. So not only does he have standing as an affected interested party, but we're only here tonight because this was his request. Thank you for the opportunity to present. And Jeff apologizes that he cannot be here. As you know, he's very actively personally involved in his investments. He is on a summer vacation with his kids, so he sends his regards. I want to, first of all, thank staff, because as you can tell, this has been an extraordinary amount of work. If you're wondering what has elapsed in the two years since that public neighborhood meeting with approximately 100 people, and now, it's an awful lot of work. A lot of what staff presented, I agree with, but a portion of...
Stop swearing.
It looks like getting more and more time as you...
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting more and more time, so.
Anyway, why don't you continue?
Thank you, Hope.
This may be a while.
I wanted to finish off commending staff. It's been a lot of work. We're not in agreement on all of it, so I'm going to share with you what we are in agreement with and where our interests diverge. I thought it might be helpful to just look at the coastline of our city, and you'll notice there's development all along the lakefront, with the exception of this area, and I don't mean Curry Park, I mean to the west of Curry Park. And I think Rick Green highlighted that as... And I think Rick Green highlighted that, as the remainder of our city has enjoyed economic development during what is now the longest real estate bowl run in the history of southeast Florida. There's one part of our community that is noticeably not participating in the increase in property values, and it's this area. And there are a number of factors that play into this. I'll try to share some of them with you. This is not my first foray into this problem. I was part of the rezoning in 2002. I was not in favor of it. And in fact, I stood at a podium similar to this one at the old City Hall site and told the City Commission at the time that it was not going to result in any development, and it resulted in no development. I was part of the process in 2014, seven years ago, with Allison Justice and the CRA. That was a vast improvement, but unfortunately, it has not resulted in any development. I can put this very simply in sort of economics 101 terms for everyone. If you take the land cost plus construction cost, that exceeds the amount of comparable sales or rents, meaning, and in fact, the construction cost, I think, on its own, if you got the land for free, exceeds what the comps are in sales and rentals in this neighborhood. So it's completely upside-down economics. As a result, no developer, with the exception of Neil Kazakov, has developed anything here. So that's the problem we're solving for. Can we get some economic development activity in here that lifts the value of the neighborhood at an acceptable level of development? And I think this best illustrates, this is the only non-developed pocket along the entire coastline of our city. I also want to point out, a few blocks to the north at Rybavich, this is already an approved site plan by you and the City Commission. It is six high-rise towers up to 30 stories. I think one of them has already commenced construction. So high-rise development at the north end of our city is in existence already and more to come. That's by way of context. I also want to give you a little more context on the Seamud District, which is outlined in blue, and what my client Jeff Green owns, which is outlined in red, which is basically most of the vacant land that is, and all of the land in the Core One District. Now, this is what your current Seamud zoning regulations permit. This is the 2014 version of Seamud. I'm now on Seamud version 3.0, and hopefully, we'll get it right this time. So you'll notice that you can build under the existing code bumper-to-bumper, property line-to-property line. And I'll show you in a moment what that would potentially result in. And at the neighborhood meeting two years ago, I think the inescapable conclusion of virtually everyone in that room was, we don't want to see this happen. The worst thing we can do is nothing and leave Seamud regulations the way they are, because 100% of the people agree that that results in something that we don't desire as a community. So this is the massing in height that would be associated with that. I'll give you some different view angles, but you can see a row of 15-story buildings, property line-to-property line, might look good for a developer, because it's lots of square footage. It won't look good when you're driving up and down North Flagler Drive. It'll be like a half-mile drive past the Department of Commerce Building in Washington, DC, just a mass of concrete. And this is probably a better perspective of that. So this is what you can do by right today. And this is why the staff is in front of you, asking for changes to it. Now, what happened on April 5, a couple of years ago, was Herzog &amp; De Meurian, a world-famous architectural firm out of Switzerland, hired by my client Jeff Green, put on a presentation and said, "Look, this is not good land-use philosophy. It would be better to have tall, skinny buildings that open up view corridors and the development site than it is to have short, fat, squatty buildings." And I'm oversimplifying this, but that was the essence of the discussion. And for anyone who was in the room two years ago, you will recall, there was almost unanimity, and yes, we agree, we would rather trade height for open space. Everyone also understood fundamentally that there would be no more development capacity, no more square footage, no more density. As staff pointed out, there is a finite density in Seamud that has been finite for over 20 years. It's baked into our comp plan. It's 4,065 residential units and 2.3 million square feet of non-residential. Some of that has already been developed, by the way, but most of it still exists. So we're not talking about any additional sellable square footage for a developer. So this is not an upzoning, and I want to be clear. This is taking short, fat buildings and squeezing them into tall, skinny buildings if it is in the best interest of both the developer and the community. So that was the discussion point. Now, here's what they showed at the time. They demonstrated shorter buildings in the middle, getting taller as it goes to the edges of the Seamud District. That is the reverse of what your staff is recommending tonight. In fact, they want the height in the middle stepping down on the edges. My client and I agree with that. You don't want to put the tall buildings up against the single-family residential or the lower-rise buildings to the north or south. So we agree with that change by the staff. So this is the Herzog &amp; De Meurian mock-up of it from two years ago, that the neighborhood liked. Again, it's inverted, it has the tall buildings at the edges, and we agree with staff that the height should be in the middle, stepping down as it reaches the edges of the district. This is a mock-up of a building design that Herzog showed to the community. That's not to say this is what it would be designed like, but it gives an idea of unique, different, modern architecture that needs more height, but would give more green space, view corridors, light corridors, back to the public. And this is what, on April 5, 2019, I think everyone walked away saying this would be a good trade-off for the community. Also discussed at that was a Northwood Road extension all the way across Flagler Drive and through Curry Park to the water. Staff is recommending this. We agree with it, but with some distinction. Staff, as I understand it, would like to have this be vehicular, and we disagree with that. We think it should be pedestrian. I can give you a lot of reasons and examples for that, and I, but it is best suited for pedestrian greenway, not vehicles. Now, this is the current Seamud zoning, if you were looking east on Northwood Road. So this is what you could build by right today. We all agree, this is bad. This is what it would be if we made some changes to the code. I think we can all agree, this is better. This is looking down Flagler Drive at, you know, the Department of Commerce Building. I think we all agree, this is not good coming to the edge of the property line or near the edge of the property line with a 15-story wall of concrete. This was the Herzog &amp; De Meurian idea, leaving open space along Flagler Drive and setting those buildings back. This is the existing Seamud sub-districts, which staff went through. You can see on the far right, well, let's start on the far left, the Core, which is those pink areas where the most height is permitted under today's code, the transition area to the west, north, and south of the Core, and then the edge area where it addresses Old Northwood. Obviously, you want to step it down when it gets near single-family historic neighborhoods. This is the staff proposal, which we also agree with. The only change is breaking it into Core One and Core Two, allowing more height in Core One, less height in Core Two. We are in agreement with that. Again, you can see at the bottom, a maximum of 4,065 residential units, that doesn't change, and a maximum of 2.3 million square feet of non-residential, that doesn't change either. That has been baked into the code and the comp plan for a long time. Here's where we have our divergence of interest with the city staff. And before we go into this, I want to talk fundamentally what that discussion was two years ago, or at least our take on it, and I think it was the take of the other community members. Would the developer take the trade of creating more public open space in return for getting the same cubic content or same sellable square footage back, but in a taller building? There was no discussion of paying the city money, mobility fees, anything that you see on this menu that all costs the developer money. The developer's not going to pay for it, whether it's Jeff Green or any developer, and I'll tell you why, because you have upside-down development economics in this neighborhood already. Do you really think a developer is going to pay even more to be even more upside-down? It's not going to happen. I do acknowledge staff's presentation, that there is more value in the higher floors, but I will tell you, that value is largely offset by the additional construction cost of high-rise construction. Under the Florida Building Code, which I know you're familiar with, there are very large increases in cost when you go from mid-rise development to high-rise. Incidentally, it also takes a lot longer to build it. So that means your money is out there a lot longer, and you sell your units later. So the, it's really a wash from a developer's perspective. You're not giving the developer one more square foot of sellable space. It costs more to build it, it takes longer to sell it. Will you get a premium? You will. I disagree with staff using Bristol as an analogy. That is an apples-to-beer cans analogy. They are entirely different. If you do any basic appraisal work, you will see a dramatic difference between South Flagler Drive real estate values and North Flagler Drive real estate values, which in fact, is the problem we're all trying to solve for tonight. Why have they not experienced increasing property values, while the Bristol, La Clara, Forte, and other projects on South Flagler are doing well? And there's a lot of reasons for that. Most of those should be obvious to you, but, you know, proximity to the Norton, proximity to the Ann Norton Sculpture Garden, walkability to the downtown, walkability over the Middle Bridge and to the Public Beach in Palm Beach, to the Four Arts, to restaurants in Palm Beach. You have none of that walkability at the Seamud location. What you have are a lot of vacant lots with litter blowing around and homeless people there. And I will note, if you were not watching the City Commission meeting a week ago, a longtime resident of West Palm Beach stood at this very microphone and said, "I parked my boat trailer there, took my boat out. When I came back, the license plates off my boat trailer had been stolen. I called the police. The police, instead of filing the police report, gave me a ticket for not having a tag on my boat trailer, and they did it to the people on either side of me." And so you can't even take your boat out in broad daylight at the Curry Park boat ramp without having your license plate stolen, then getting ticketed by the police, who hopefully are, you know, trying to prevent that. So, you know, these are diametrically opposite situations from the Bristol. I think the market reflects that. If it were different, you would have seen these developed in 2014, or you would see them being developed now, but they're not. Let me now dive into why this chart doesn't work for the developer either, and I can give you just a few examples. Let's focus on the column on the far right, which is Core One, which is the tallest buildings. So under the staff proposal, you get 111 feet by right with the ability to buy up to 397 feet. So the delta that you're trying to solve for, if you're the developer, is 286 feet. We'll start to look down the maximum footage that you can buy on that far-right-hand column. And you will quickly realize, simple math, that you run out of the ability to buy bonus height. For example, the extension of Northwood Road, you can only do that once, folks. Go down to numbers four and five, a food store or supermarket. Look, I've tried for multiple developers over multiple years to attract a grocery store. I think the CRA will tell you, they've done everything but build the grocery store for the grocer. It's, they've never gotten one. If you're lucky enough to get one, you're not getting more than one. So let's say you're lucky, and you get one of them, you'll, you know, this incentive goes away. So now you're left with, you would need to do a lead certification, you'd have to pay money to the city for mobility options, start to add them up. You cannot get 286 feet times the number of buildings that you need on those five Core One parcels. By the way, you can't have more than a 300-foot building in a Core One parcel. Some of those Core One parcels are 500 and 600 feet long, which means you need two towers on them. So it's not just five buildings you're trying to buy up for. It can be seven, or eight, or nine buildings that you're trying to buy up for at 286 feet each. It doesn't work. And then to top it all off, look at the bottom line. Public open space. Go to the far right, Core One. It's not applicable. Are you kidding me? That's the reason all of this started, was so that you could provide public open space in return for height, so the very reason they had the Herzog presentation, the very reason that the 100 people met on April 5, two years ago, and the very reason we're here tonight, was to create open space in the Core One area right along Flagler Drive, and it's not available as an incentive for creating open space. So I'm, you know, flabbergasted as to why that is the case. I would propose a much simpler solution than this menu, which no developer's going to give another dollar to build a project that is already economically upside-down. What we should do is what was, I thought, agreed to two years ago at that community meeting, and that is find some sort of ratio or formula that grants the developer height for every foot of setback that they're willing to give back to the public. So we did some basic analysis. I didn't, someone a lot smarter than me in my office, Meredith Lee, who's standing behind me, did this, who has a PhD in land planning, by the way. And if you use a four-to-one ratio, a four foot of additional height for every one foot of setback on a primary street, Flagler, you can make this work. It works for all of the Core One properties except one, which is the second bullet point. For lots with a depth less than 200 feet, you'd need six additional feet of height. We offer that as an alternative, because I think that meets the spirit and intent of that public meeting two years ago. Let's talk about the Northwood Road extension. We agree with staff that it should be extended, be the right thing to do. We disagree that it should be vehicular. This is what that extension would look like. You'll note several things. If you put it through the middle, you completely devalue my client's property between Ponce de Leon and Flagler. So we would need to work out some sort of compensation for that. That would be a Burt Harris taking, an eminent domain, something, and that's not provided for in any way. You would create two orphaned parcels on either side that are both non-developable because of the small geometry. So we would need to solve for that problem. Notice that you already have a perfectly good road right-of-way with pavement, with striping, 150 feet to the south at 23rd Street. These are hard projects to pull off, if you know what goes behind putting in a new road right-of-way. You have to have surveys, soil reports, geotech work, you have to build roadbed, put in roads, stripe it, relocate underground utilities. It's a lot more expensive than the simplistic view of, you get $25,000 or a foot of value for every part of the road. But think about how much you're increasing the cost by doing this. You would then have to put a traffic signal on Flagler. There's already a traffic signal at 23rd and Flagler. So to move that 150 feet north, we have the county roadway section price at force, it's $512,000 to move that signal, 150 feet. Let's say, you know, someone with a spare $512,000 was willing to do that for you. Now you cut it right into Curry Park, where you do not presently have a driveway into Curry Park. Why wouldn't you leave it at 23rd Street, where you have an existing driveway into Curry Park? So I, I think this is making it harder than it needs to be by asking it to be vehicular. I also think, even if money were plentiful and not an object, and you could move traffic signals and, and create vehicular entrance ways into Curry Park, why would you do that? You want to create a pedestrian-friendly mall. Have you ever noticed that when you come into downtown, they didn't put the main thoroughfare from I-95 into Clemata Street, our historic walking street? They did it a block away on Banyan, so you can park and get out of your car and walk to Clematus, where it has a safer feel. Wide sidewalks, calm traffic. You can see that at Lincoln Road in Miami Beach, you can see that Los Olas in Fort Lauderdale. You come in on Broward Boulevard, you park, you walk a block, you're now in the pedestrian mall area. I don't think it's a good idea from anyone's perspective, including financially, to make this vehicular. So let's be smart, use the road infrastructure that we already have in place, and make it pedestrian. Here's another divergent point with staff. If you look at their Seamud sub-district, they make that middle parcel of ours a public open space, a park. But there's no discussion as to, how are you going to compensate my client for taking their land on a zoning map and converting it from what you can now build 15 stories on to a public park? So that's obviously... So that's obviously an illegal taking that would need to be figured out as well. I also note that that parcel to the south that staff stated is a PD. It is a PD. I did that approval years ago. So it is still on your zoning map as a planned development. Staff called me many months ago and said, "Do you want to abandon that and include it in our Seamud proposal?" To which I said, "Well, depends what your Seamud proposal is." And they didn't have it done yet. But once it was done, I called and said, "We would much rather be in Core One." And staff response was, "Well, too late now." So we do want to be part of the Core One, should it pass. We missed our chance because we didn't know what the proposal was. So it was hard to agree to something that you didn't know what you were agreeing to. So for the record, I'd like to state that not only can you not take my client's land without compensation under the US and Florida Constitution, we would like to have the property, should this proceed forward in the Core One. Now, this was sent to me by a neighbor. I guess it's being distributed by some folks in the community. I just want, for the record, to state the obvious, because this appears as a scare tactic to the community. That image in the bottom, which I've blown up here, this is not possible. This would be doubling or tripling the amount of square footage that is even permissible. I think what was done here is taking one of the buildings in Core One and seeing how many of them you can stack in here to frighten the public. This, of course, is not possible because this far exceeds the development capacity of Seamud. And I want you and the folks here who may not be as knowledgeable about the Seamud regulations as the rest of us to be aware that staff has never proposed anything like this. Your city commission would never approve anything like this. And then finally, I'd like to leave you with this. Well, we want to work with staff on this because I think they have most of it right. This is the result of the way I read the current Seamud regs proposal in front of you. It still allows building almost to the property lines with very small setbacks. So this is sort of the worst of all scenarios. This is where you can still build bumper-to-bumper. And if I had a client who was inclined to spend all of that money buying up the 286 feet, now you have a 400-foot tall building and it's still property line to property line, which is worse than where we started at the beginning of tonight. So again, the agreement between the neighborhood and the developer two years ago at that meeting was the developer will make mid-rise fat buildings, tall and skinny, same square footage, no more development capacity. There's an incentive for the developer. There's a cost to the developer, but maybe it would make the economics work so that if there is development, the public's view of the waterfront is not cut off. The view sheds and light are not cut off. And if I'm reading their proposed regs correctly, they can correct me if I'm wrong, you don't get the increased setback, but you do have the opportunity to buy up the additional height. That's a worse scenario. So I will stop here. I genuinely appreciate you being willing to listen to this. Not only do I have a client involved here, this is my fourth client in 20 years on these properties. We need to finally get it right, not just check the box that we passed something. This neighborhood has been waiting too long to enjoy the economic benefits that everyone else in the city is enjoying, and the only reason they're not is because we don't have good zoning here. And we don't have to spend money doing it. The city commission has the power of their zoning pin, which is absolutely free. They can create value overnight and instigate development in areas that don't have development and not cost the CRA TIF money. Simply use their zoning pin. I encourage you to think through this. If it requires coming back another time or a few more times, let's get it right. I understand the community's concern about height and setbacks, and that is what we were trying to accomplish tonight. And unfortunately, I don't think we've done it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green, if you're available.
I just want to give you a chance just to briefly respond before we open up to public comment.
Well, a lot of this we haven't seen yet, so it was presented to you, and we've seen some of this. In terms of the incentives, again, a lot of those incentives could be done with any building. The Northwood Road extension that allows up to the 130 feet in height, there's a possibility, based on the cost of that roadway, that a couple different buildings could utilize that incentive at the full amount, depending on what that final roadway cost comes out to be. But certain things like lead certification, providing parking for Curry Park within the building, workforce housing, those are givens that could go across any building and not have to worry, like the grocery store, that you build one, then you can't utilize the incentive again. If that was a concern, then certainly I would recommend to the board that maybe we increase the incentive for the workforce housing, because in my mind, that's one of our biggest needs in that area. So maybe increase the incentive to not cap it at, if it's 100 feet, maybe allow it more. And we can do that with all the other incentives and see if we limit the maximum number, but we think that the incentive program works. Our concern, simply setting the building back, you're going to get the height that you desire, and yes, you get maybe some additional open space, but what are the residents getting back in return for that? That would be my concern.
I think, any other questions of staff? And if not, go ahead.
Rick? In the past, when we had major rezonings, the city made a massing study, like we did at Banyan and various other of these areas. How come we didn't do this here?
City staff doing a massing study?
Yeah.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
Do you want to say so?
We have never done it.
Yeah.
In Banyan? We had a very nice presentation every time there's a rezoning. Maria Ponte also provided one, massing studies. It's been done in the past every time.
Typically, we don't do it outside of downtown.
Oh, outside of downtown?
Yep.
You got to come up. I can't. You got to come up. What developer?
Angela Van Panen, Zone Administrator. All the measures that we have seen and been done by a developer. I mean, staff doesn't have the capacity to do that type of analysis. And second, if I can comment on something, Mr. Orr talks about, one of the things that we've been working on this project for almost two and a half, three years with Mr. Green, and all due respect to Mr. Orr, he just came into the process about, what, three months ago, four months ago? So we've been back and forth with Mr. Green over two, three, after that meeting, back and forth, actually met with his actual developer, designer. So staff has been back and forth with this. Some of the things he's bringing up, we initially talked to Mr. Green about two and a half years ago. So I mean, we can get with Mr. Orr in terms of Northwood Road and the things like that. We understand what we need to do and work with him about the spot. We understand all of that part of it. But again, we've worked with him, talked with him, talked with the architect, been back and forth, and then Mr. Orr, he comes in, you know, three months, and we basically have not seen what he's talking about. And just answered your other question is, basically been developer-driven. We asked the developers, do a massing study. They hire from the other money and they bring in and do a massing study, not necessarily staff.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green, anything you want to add before we hear from the public? All right. For those who wish to speak, first, we need to be sure we get a card from you. This helps establish the record of what we're doing. If you have not completed a card, I would ask that you do so, and please give it to the clerk. I'm going to call these cards in the order which they were received. We're going to put two on each podium. I'll be calling people to come down. If there's anyone here who was not present when you were sworn in, if you would please stand up now, if you wish to offer testimony this evening, anyone here who came in after the initial swearing-in, if you would please stand up and raise your right hand. If there's no one, then we won't worry about it. All right. Starting at this podium, we'll have Carl Flick and Lisa Wagner, and on this podium, please, we will have David Zahn and Martin List.
Okay. Is it possible that I can get 10 minutes? Because I'm going to represent a lot of people out here. And you had Harvey Oyer with 30 minutes.
Let me say this. I'll tell you what I can do, what I cannot do. What made Mr. Oyer in a different category is his client owns property within this.
Can we restart my time?
And we have a legal obligation to afford him that extra time. I will give you, because you're representing a larger group and a professional, I'll give you five minutes.
Thank you.
Everyone else, it'll be three minutes.
Okay.
And go ahead and proceed.
All right. My name is Carl Flick. I'm an urban planner. I am president of the Northwood Shores Neighborhood Association. I submitted to the board here about a 30-page white paper that disputes many of the claims that were made, both by planning staff and also by the representative from Mr. Green. And I just want to say real quick that the illustration that they showed, and they said it was way over capacity, and then right after that, they showed you the current Seamud, and then they showed you those block diagrams, that was over capacity too, because that is just the building envelope, just like the illustration before. So I want to make sure that you know the distinction there, that how to lie with pictures is to just put up the envelope and go, "Oh, look." Oh, it's very unacceptable. What is really at stake here is what is Seamud? I'm one of the authors of the original Seamud back in 2002. It won an award, The Thousand Friends of Florida, is one of the best community, city cooperative efforts in the state of Florida, won the number-one award. And Seamud was all about urban mixed-use village. The original Seamud was limited in terms of height. As you know, it came back in 2014 and was reworked, but that urban village didn't go away. And what you see here is an abandonment of the urban village into a suburban enclave. And what you have here also is a disagreement between the planning staff and Mr. Green's representative. This thing is not fully baked. And so tonight, we would ask that you defer making any decision on this. And when it comes to the public meeting that occurred back in April of 2019, I was at that meeting. That meeting was seated with probably about 50% of the people coming from outside the community. And we waited, we waited, we waited for the ability to make public comment. We were never really given that opportunity. It was a shout fest. So I want you to be aware, when they use that meeting to legitimize what they're doing, that the community has backed this, nothing could be further from the truth. I was there. I witnessed it, and many other people did too. We had another community meeting opportunity on April of this year. I was one of three speakers at that meeting. You could hear crickets. It was a meeting that no one attended because no one knew about it. I found out about it about three minutes before the meeting and got on the Zoom meeting and made my opposition to the plan well-known. If you want to gauge the three comments, two-thirds were in opposition from the community at that meeting. But what we asked for immediately after that illegitimate meeting was a real community meeting, and the response we got from the planning department and from the city administrator was no. So I really think what you should do is send this back to the community so that we can give you our heartfelt opinions about this. And I'll tell you how most of the people feel. Those of you who are against this plan, raise your hand right now. There's a lot of people that don't like this plan and why. It's not compatible with the surrounding land uses. What we have here is just a giveaway with the incentives. Take a look at the incentive packages. Like, for example, for affordable housing, 2%? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? That is nothing. And then there is a pay-in lieu. So what does that mean? The developer can pay, and that particular requirement, he gets his height, but that requirement for affordable housing, it goes somewhere else, at some other date, at some other time, at some other place. That is not addressing the affordable housing issue for Palm Beach County, which Seamud was a premier stellar example of providing for affordable housing. And that's just one of the incentives. One of the other fake incentives that they give is Curry Park and the ability to create more park space. In the Seamud area, you have Joel Days Park, Piccadilly Park, and right across the street, Curry Park. Curry Park just got $8 million in bond and $25 million in flood protection funding. We don't need more park in the Curry corridor. We have plenty of park within two blocks, but that incentive allows just to pay the money, get the height. And so we object. If you look at the very foundation of the planning staff report, it says we meet that this area is compatible with the surrounding community. And it isn't compatible with the surrounding community. We are one- and two-story historic community to the north. And if you look, did I exceed my time?
Yeah, I'm having trouble with the timer.
Okay. I'm sorry. So I'll quickly do this. So the compatibility issue has not been resolved. From every single backyard in our community, we will see this 397-foot building. And yes, we are responsible for the illustration that Harvey Oyer showed, and it was not about trying to show build-out. It was trying to show the building type that we're going to get, and we don't think that's compatible with our community. So what we're looking for is the original Seamud, and again, don't lie with the picture showing those volumes that would never get 4,065 units. We are going to get real architecture. We are going to get a village and a fabric and people living there. And the people that are living there, affordable, attainable units, just like what was mentioned, but these are people that will live there year-round, they'll be in Curry Park, they'll populate the park. And what we are looking at with this iteration is really just exclusive gated areas that are surrounded by trees and parking lots, but there is no real community. Who will buy those? Exclusive, people that will partially be there part of the year. One of the problems we have in Curry Park is we don't have eyes on the street. And so this will not solve it. Only an urban village will solve this.
All right, Mr. Flick, if you can conclude.
Okay. And so in conclusion, what we ask, we would like a community meeting, a real community meeting where we can speak. So we would urge you in this meeting, send it back, ask the planning staff to give us what we were supposed to be given back in April, and then we'll make a comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. David Zahn, if you could proceed, and Lisa Wagner, if you could be on deck here. Thank you so much. Are we having the timer working? If not, I can keep the time here.
Sorry, you need to wait.
Well, I set up something here if we need to.
Three minutes?
All right. Go ahead, sir. Nope, too soon. I'll tell you what, I've got a thing here, and I will raise my hand when you're down to 30 seconds, okay? Why don't you please proceed?
Thanks. Good evening. My name is David Zahn. I'm the vice president and board of directors of the Portofino condo, 2600 North Flagler. Our 125-unit building is adjacent to the north side of Curry Park, as you guys know. First, I want to appreciate the work you guys do and make our city a very desirable place to live in. The proposed rezoning of the Seamud area across from our building gives us grave concern. Why do we need a rezoning, and in particular, to allow 397-foot height for condominium towers? Let me state firmly that we do not oppose development of the open land, and we encourage it. We want it to harmonize with our surrounding neighborhood, and that means keeping buildings' heights reasonable and compatible with the low buildings in Northwood Village surrounding residences and our Portofino condo at 10 stories. For the record, I'm submitting a petition from many of our residents stating our position. And I would also like to add the following remarks for the record. While the density of the 4,065 units has not changed, you are proposing an increased height of the condominium from 15 stories, which is 147 feet, to a towering building up to 397, which is a whopper of an increase. Aesthetically and visually, of 300 and 400-foot towers, would be nothing less than shocking. Section 4, Article 6 of the 85A and B Planning Board Proposal Claims, the proposed text amendments affect an urbanized redevelopment area within the city and will not result in significant adverse impacts to the natural environment. But we are hardly urbanized, we are historic, artsy, and low-key, and there is no basis for the claim that natural environment will not be harmed. This proposal will have a hugely negative impact on our lives, with the potential of adding 6,000 to 7,000 people in our neighborhood. In the seven years since the comprehensive plan was adopted... In the seven years since the comprehensive plan was adopted, much was changed, and we have no recent studies of the impact of the big increase of traffic, water, sewage, fire, and sea level rise in the environment. Furthermore, in the proposal on June 8th, 2021, your staff claims the proposed text amendment will not have an impact on the demand of public facilities, nor would it cause the capacity of facilities to be exceeded. How is it possible to make such a statement when no recent studies have been done? Let's consider sea level rise, a distant notion in 2014, and then the new Curry Park redesign calls for a $16 million, $16 million new higher sea wall and water management system. It should be noted that North Flagler already floods in the king tides. We respectfully request that the sea mud be rezoned, rezoning be denied, and we ask that the planning board and city work with the developer to find a more sensible, harmonious, compatible solution. And I would like to present the petition to you guys.
Thank you. Please give it to the clerk. All right. You are Lisa Wagner?
Gisa Wagner, and I am a.
Before you begin, ma'am, if we could please have Greg, is it Murmangas? At 42131 First Street? And Homer Marshman at this podium? Go ahead, ma'am. Please proceed.
I'm Gisa Wagner, and I'm a long-term owner at LaFontana, right next to Portofino. And I've now lived through many, many years of this development of the area right across from Curry Park, which I was really looking forward to. Having listened to these presentations today, I'm really, how should I say, distraught because it seems that Mr. Green has bought up a lot of land, and now we are dancing to his tune, which is like, well, you know, I'm going to develop it, and now I want all these goodies to be able to do exactly what I want. And I find that in the process of getting there, you know, the communities was left behind in being able to give comment at the appropriate times. So I would really hope that there is a lot of reconsideration of how this has developed. And then another concern I have is that between sea level rise and the flooding that we already experienced on Flagler, every single time there is a higher tide, it doesn't even have to be a king tide anymore, I cannot see how we have a massive development like that, you know, without having a deep study on what the impact would be, you know, from sea level rise, having these buildings there. What would you have to put there to, you know, get them high enough to not be affected by that? Have any of these studies be done? And I would really hope that in this new, new age where we are really threatened by, by sea level rise, we would consider making these studies very seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Martin List, okay, after Mr. List on this podium, if we could hear from Stephen Harsonet and Brian Seymour. Okay, sir, if you could proceed.
I'm Martin List, and I'm speaking tonight as president of Temple Israel. We're located at 1901 North Flagler Drive, which is the south side of Pine Street. Temple Israel has been located in West Palm Beach for 100 years within the next two years. First, we were on Broward Avenue, and now on Flagler Drive. We've always cared about the well-being of the community, both for our Jewish and non-Jewish neighbors alike. We're very excited about the growth in West Palm Beach and what it means for all of our future. We understand that there's tremendous value in the proposed regulations for the city, for the property owners who are benefiting, and for the community as a whole. We do not object to the proposals that provide these things. And we've noticed, I've noticed tonight, that a lot of the conversation has been directed at a single developer. Yes, that developer represents 50% of the parcels. I'm part of the group that is in the other 50% that hasn't been spoken about tonight. We support the concepts and recognize that the benefit to the city comes in working on concepts of zoning that work for the business part of development. And I think there's a lot here tonight that is a good basis to begin that conversation and continue that conversation. We are only asking that we be treated as others are. The current proposed change would benefit us by less than 10 feet in height, but the property on the other side of Pine Street is been, is getting more than 100 additional feet. We have no plans today, but we want to make sure that we have options consistent with our neighboring property owners. What we're concerned about is that we have been left out. To be treated similarly to our neighboring property, we ask that you amend the Core 1 boundary and put our property in Core 1 as the only remaining Flagler Drive-fronting property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Greg Murmangas.
Okay, please proceed, sir.
Greg Murmangas, 31st Street, Old Northwood. Back 17 years ago, I worked for a firm in Boca Raton, and a prospective builder in Curry, in the Curry Park area came and did a proposal. And so this is 17 years ago, they were showing us townhouses and other residential developments. So 17 years later, nothing has still happened in what is to be the sea mud. After the proposal, the presentation that Mr. Green did at the Center for Creative Education about two years ago, which I agree, it was a phenomenal proposal, and most of the people in attendance agreed that it was. I went back to the membership of the Old Northwood Neighborhood Association, and at the time, I happened to be the president. And we talked about it, and we did a presentation on that and what had been proposed for the area just south of us. And overwhelmingly, and I don't believe it was quite unanimous, but it was near-unanimous support for what we saw in the high-rise buildings and the, the new types of, of regulations for height that would be put in, graduating it from the out exterior toward the interior where it would be higher. I do want to voice some of what the previous speaker to me was talking about and how this does seem to make financial sense for any builder that comes along. And 17 years, I've seen nothing but dirt right now in what will be sea mud. I would encourage you to approve this and pass it along to the next step in the final approval for Mr. Green or whomever may build in that, that location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Harsonet.
Okay.
42131 First Street, in Old Northwood. So first of all, I did attend the presentation that was given at the Center for Creative Education. And I might take objection to Mr. Oyer's comment about 100 people being there. It was easily 200, perhaps more. The room was jam-packed, every seat was taken, and there was standing room only. It was a very thoughtful presentation, and there was public comment given. I, for one, made a public comment at the end of the presentation. I found it to be a very, very uplifting, very positive presentation because it was giving me hope, hope that the north end one day might realize its potential. I've lived in Northwood for eight years now. I purchased a property, not at the height of the market, but I bought one of the most expensive properties in the community. I thought I was a visionary. There were signs that were already posted in the properties that, that Mr. Green now owns showing examples of properties, mid-rise, high-rise buildings that were to be built, that never materialized. Eight years later, I have to say I'm very disappointed. I get depressed driving up North Dixie Highway. There's no development there, there's no chance of development there. Until we have density on the north end, good luck getting your grocery stores. You know, I hear people talking about Trader Drows on Broadway. Really? I mean, seriously, let's put on our thinking caps, people, developers develop for profit. They don't develop to make people feel good. So we have to take into consideration what Mr. Oyer said. I happen to believe his presentation was very valid. Where's the incentive for an investor, a developer, to come in and develop what should be the prime waterfront properties of West Palm Beach? The proximity to downtown, the potential ocean views, everything that you could ask for from a development standpoint, and yet, eight years since I've lived there, not one stick has come out of the ground. Why, people? Do you feel good living on the north end, knowing that we're being bypassed? I see heads shaking. Yes, that's fine. I, for one, would like to be part of that development that West Palm Beach is seeing, and in general, most communities are in an up economy. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I would rather see green space preserved and vertical development than the concrete walls. And I do find, Mr. Flick admitted that they doctored that photo. He said to show the types of buildings that would be, could be built. I find that to be very disingenuous, Carl. To put a line of buildings from one end of the property to the other to show the type of building that could be built? That was a scare tactic if I ever saw one. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, you're there. One moment, please, if I could. Homer Marshman, are you still here, Homer? Would you like to come?
I think I'll go for it until later maybe.
Okay, all right, we'll put you toward the end. Rena Hunter, are you here? If you could stand behind Brian. And on the other podium, if we could hear from Matt Chambers and Joanne, is it McKevitz? 2600 North Flagler, number 207. If you could be behind that one as well. Go ahead, Brian.
So if Harvey got 15, can I get 45? I'm kidding.
Give me two instead of three.
Thank you for the opportunity. For the record, my name is Brian Seymour. I'm an attorney with the Gunster Law Firm on behalf of the new owners of both 1919 and 1911 Flagler. These are folks who are coming to the market because they see the future of this city, and they have experience building just exactly the kind of buildings that we're talking about in the Core 1 district. We've been looking at, since they purchased these properties very recently, been looking at the, the sea mud options, the Curry Park master plan, and they're very excited about what this vision is and what's coming forward tonight and hopefully continuing forward to city commission. As we've been looking at the proposed regulations, we've worked through some conceptual development models. We have an architect who did some massing, but only for our own properties. Sorry, we didn't mass the whole thing. But we discovered during those exercises that there are a few things that we think could benefit. They're, they're in there, but with some tweaks that we think we can work through. And these are ideas that we'd like to, to propose tonight. And if need be, we're happy to sit down with the staff before it goes to city commission, start working out some of the details of this and any tweaks that might come from that. So the first goes to the lead certification. You heard Harvey talk about the cash limits, and you heard Rick's response about the fact that there are other options in addition to the cash. The lead is a critical one of those. And we looked at that, and, and we actually think sustainable development and green development and moving that forward and incentivizing that is a great idea. But particularly here in Florida, when you get to gold and platinum, it's almost impossible. It is extremely expensive to develop gold and platinum buildings. We don't want to lose the incentive in the capture of the perfect and lose the opportunity for the real, and opportunity for the good, for it to really happen. So we would ask that there be some allowance for lead silver, not necessarily at the same heights, not necessarily at the same levels, but an allowance for lead silver in the development opportunities so that there be an amendment with the lead to allow for an additional 20 feet of extra height for a building that meets lead silver or its equivalent as defined in the, the lead program within the city's code, which is already there. Second is to Curry Park. We think there's some tweaks here. It's one that benefits all of the residents of the city, certainly the folks that could come, work, and live here, the folks that are already there. And the improvements to Curry Park are incredibly valuable. And the CRA and their consultants have done an unbelievable job working with the neighborhood and everybody else. There are several million dollars worth improvements, and I think Allison gave a number that even with the, with the grants, there would be an additional 10-plus million dollars that would be needed for those improvements. So what we're asking here to incentivize the amounts, to allow the full scope of the improvement.
Your time would normally be, but do you represent a property owner in this, in this sea mud?
Yes, they own two properties.
We'll give you some additional time.
I'm almost finished. I'm a lawyer. I've never done anything in three minutes since I graduated law school.
Thank goodness.
Says the architect. So to incentivize all of this, what we're asking is that the incentive could be better served if we raised from 65 feet on that incentive to 100 feet on that incentive. Give us a little more opportunity, we could put a little more cash towards Curry Park. Yes, it's going to run out, but it can front-load, it can be an opportunity. And our client's ready to go to start really looking at this. They want to be a part of this market, they want to be a part of this development, and that extra money could allow the city to do even more with Curry Park. Then again, we note this is just one concept on how we're going to accomplish this goal. We're not tied to every detail of what I proposed. These are the things we came up with as we were massing, happy to sit down with Rick and Linda and work through some of this. So we do appreciate this. We appreciate the opportunity. We hope this moves forward. We support it, and we hope that these changes will be incorporated in your recommendation tonight so that we can actually work through those and create something that really will incentivize, and we can look forward. And I, I understand Mr. Green owns the vast majority of the property. For this property owner, with these tweaks, they think they can move forward and start building something. And again, it's just this corner, but it is something that we think can be worthwhile and help us move something forward if we can add those. So we'd ask that you put those into your recommendations tonight, and appreciate your time.
Thank you. And your name, sir?
Matt Chambers.
Okay, if you could.
Thank you all for your service. Welcome, Kathleen. I, I just had an appraisal done on my house, and the bank used west of Broadway for my appraisal. They didn't use the Bristol, just for record. Northwood is, is, is a unique area, right? I've been here 11 years. I'm a small-business owner on Northwood Road. We made the investment seven years ago to, to try to run a small business on that street. My husband is president of the Merchants Association. We're very engaged in the city. I, too, attended that meeting in 2019. It was standing room only, it was much more than 100 people, and there was a standing ovation at the end. That being said, you know, we could talk about how great the, the sea mud plan was back in 1999 or 2002. The fact of the matter is, all of that land remains vacant. There is no reason that the most prime real estate waterfront property should be left vacant. Whether we have to go back to the drawing board to, to meet with the developer and the city staff, and, and yeah, maybe Jeff Green has a long history of maybe making things not happen, but if nobody's built on that property for such a length, a long time, and there's nobody coming to the table, nothing is going to change. The north end is not going to change. Talking about, I, I agree with having a pedestrian walkway into the shops of Northwood Village. I am a shop owner. I think that will help. I think the fact that the redesign of Curry Park, there's also an anchor site on the other end of Northwood Road prepared, I think that will really truly make it, to park in, park in the new anchor site or park down by Curry Park and walk through the village, help the shop owners, help these restaurants. The restaurants and the shops, I don't know if any of you go to Northwood Road, they're all surviving on weekly basis. I mean, every week, we talk to one of the restaurants next door, and it's, hey, I don't know if I'm going to make it another week. Without people coming to the north end, nothing is going to change. This, this concept of who, you know, who was at the meeting, who wasn't at the meeting, that's not going to change our city. The north end of the city should be a, an extension to downtown. There's going to be a whole bunch of new jobs coming to downtown, there's going to be people looking for homes. The market, the real estate market has gone a little bit crazy right now. It's going to adjust itself somewhat, but bringing more people to the city in a building like this will help everybody in the north end. So I suggest that we, we go back, the staff, go back to the drawing board with Jeff Green or with Harvey's attorney, and, and talk a little bit more and see what really makes sense for what, what needs to be done. Maybe the developer's asking for more than he really needs, but if there's truth to that, and we're not going to develop, we can have all the meetings we want, you can, you can approve anything you want today, the commission can approve. If we're going to sit on, on land, it's going to be, it's going to be shame. So please support it and, and maybe give them some advice tonight.
Thank you so much, sir. And you are, ma'am?
Renee Hunter.
One moment, please. Behind her, we could get Joanne Mitzkowitz and Shirley Herman. And on this podium, Carl Peterson and Leslie Jokovic. Okay, please proceed.
Yes, I'm just, I have some food for thought here. It's not to say that I'm for or opposed.
I'm so sorry, can you speak more in the microphone? We're having difficult hearing you. Speak more into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. It's not to say that I'm for or opposed to all the parts of what's being presented to us today. us today, but I'd like to introduce myself again. My name is Renee Hunter, and I've lived in Northwood Shores for over 10 years, and I've seen a beautiful and organic transformation in my little community. I've enjoyed seeing children on my street play and grow. I serve our community as an engineer, working for a well-known local corporation, and I'd like to tell you a little bit what that means. Engineers are very similar to city planners and city decision-makers, like yourself. We, like you, make decisions that impact the health and safety and well-being of our communities. Thus, as engineers, we must perform under a standard of professional behavior that requires adherence to the highest principles of ethical conduct. As engineers, we hold paramount the safety, health, and welfare of the public, perform services only in the area of our full competence, so that we understand 100% of the consequences of any decisions that we make, and are 100% certain that we will not cause our communities' harm in any way for the short-term or long-term health, safety, and well-being of our communities. This means, too, adhering to the current laws and regulations, which were passed for that purpose. If an entity approaches me or my company with an ill-thought financial incentive or bribe to make an unethical decision, obviously, I would never consider that for even a moment. I don't work for those entities that might have other financial interests, like you. We work for the people and not other outside interests. Those do not come first. So, we have seen what happens when engineers abandon their code of ethics and neglect to consider what we call human factors. Those individuals end up, actually, in some cases, with blood on their hands. Now, you might be wondering how a development such as this could cause injury or death to the people you serve. Well, the first thing to consider when looking at this is the traffic that will be introduced to the area and what that means. It's very simple. It means pollution--
Thirty seconds.
Increased asthma for children especially, and it means increased automotive accidents and pedestrian strikes, which is already in an area with minimal traffic calming. We need more traffic calming. So, this is devastating for our children. It means an increase in crime potentially, which could further destroy our sense of peace and mental health. Humans do not do well with sudden and dramatic change. Development on the scale that is proposed, I think, is way more than our community can handle.
If you could conclude your remarks, please.
It's just too much, too fast, I believe, and we also need to make sure that we prioritize climate change issues and really push for that LEED certification. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come forward?
Good evening. You called me twice, so I came up--
Okay, so maybe we'll see you now.
Thank you all very much for your service. I'm Joan Wade Kabitz, a 20-year owner at Portofino condominium, which is within the C-Mud, and a former president of the board. I'm, I'm going to be skipping around because so many of the things I wanted to say have been so well-covered by Mr. Flick and our vice president, Dave Zahn. But I just want to point out that introducing a 397-foot maximum height into the C-Mud almost looks like spot zoning. It introduces a new element that clashes badly with the existing elements, and I think that that is not a good practice in zoning. We are aware that the current zoning from 2014 allows a 190-foot maximum height of buildings in, across from Curry Park, and a 160-foot maximum height in the transition zone across from Portofino and La Fontana. That would irrevocably alter the view of the west-facing units of Portofino and La Fontana, but it is mandated. I kind of think that the presentation of Mr. Oyer might have been a little heavy on the boxiness. I do believe that there could be more setbacks and still accommodate the 4,065 residential units. However, the new zoning change allows us to more than double the height. The proposed buildings would be taller than Bristol. They would be taller than Raibovich, and it's interesting that when Director Rick Green presented a picture, he presented a picture of a 27-story building on the site, not a 38-story building. Had he presented a 38-story building, it would have appeared ungainly, as in fact it would be. So, we also, who are living across from the site, have serious concerns about concurrency and structural soundness. Some of these have been addressed, but a tall, skinny building perhaps is not supported as well by the land and the rising water table. Perhaps it would present a hazard resembling the disaster recently witnessed at Surfside. And do we have any guarantee that this construction will not affect the structural integrity of Portofino and La Fontana?
Thirty seconds.
Will the developer pay for before and after structural engineer assessments of our 50-year-old properties and repair any construction-related damage? These are considerations for a future meeting where I, I hope that you will defer your decision tonight, allow further meetings with the community, allow for the projects to mature, and thank you very much for your attention.
Who else, who else have I called? Is there anyone else's name I called? Please come forward. And on this podium, sir, are you ready to be heard, or?
Fifty, you, sir.
Okay. Why don't you come after her? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Leslie Drinkovich. I live on 35th Street. I've lived on 35th Street since 1985. I listened to the developers and Mr. Oyer for however much time you gave them, which doesn't seem really fair to me. I think--
Ma'am, if I could interject, and I won't take any of your time. Let's be clear, that's a legal requirement we have.
Okay.
It's not discretionary, and I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
There's no bias here.
All right. Well, it took all of the developers and Mr. Oyer, all of their time until maybe the last five minutes, before I even heard the word "neighborhood." And that's what I'm here about. I'm, I'm a person who belongs to a neighborhood. I live in Northwood Shores, Old Northwood, all our area from the park, really, you know, that's where I've lived. That's where I raised my children, my granddaughter, and it seems to me that we do need development. I agree with that. But to go from the 19, the 2014 proposal to this monstrosity is really nightmarish. I, I wonder if Mr. Green, or Mr. Oyer, or any of the people, developers, or yourselves, would like to live in a neighborhood with a 397-foot building overlooking your homes? I, I don't understand why we're worried about all the amenities that the people in this, these new buildings that are bigger than those downtown. Why should we worry about them? You should be considering all of the neighbors. Our park is getting the help that it needs. We do want the businesses on Northwood Road to thrive. We believe that, I believe Mr. Green has the right to develop it, but I think it should be in keeping with the neighborhood. And this proposal is not at all in keeping with the neighborhood. Imagine yours, as I just said, with the almost 400-foot, almost 40-floor building plopped into your neighborhood. I urge you to please rethink this. This, this is, this would ruin our neighborhood, absolutely ruin it. And I don't see why we should defer to Mr. Green and the developers, and developers spelled with D-E-V-I-L, in my opinion, who couldn't care less about the people who live in, in Northwood.
Thank you. I think Mr. Peterson's next.
Hi.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
You're next, sir.
Hello. Could you hear me?
Of course.
Yes, you can. Let me start off with boring you a bit. First of all, I am pro-development. I was on the vision team for Raibovich, working with them in their development. Secondly, I'm just going to give you a little background of myself, because I think it's pertinent. Tonight, the planning board and everybody in the audience has listened to what I would call major presentations and a lot of facts and figures from the planning and Mr. Oyer. And, you know, I want to say tonight, I'm a, an architect and planner. I've worked on developments in St. Petersburg, Russia, to being third finalist in the new capital of Alaska, to developments like Hilton Head Island and major shopping centers. We're a major, my firm is a major builder of supermarkets throughout the country, working for most of the major developers. Whole Foods, Publix, you name it. I want to start off the evening, you know, I, I had an agenda, and then somewhat changed after I heard Mr. Green and Mr. Oyer. So, I want to sort of share some information with you, as being an architect for 50 years. You know, the one thing I'm going to say, one major thing is, a 15,000-square-foot supermarket is not going to do a thing. It's probably not going to happen. And when you talk about 4,000 units, the cost of a 15,000-square-foot supermarket to get an incentive is nothing. I mean, it doesn't work into the equation. When you talk about a 13-foot floor-to-floor, now, I know Mr. Green is not a naive developer. When he starts to crunch his numbers, and typically, if you use 13 feet floor-to-floor, you got probably two extra feet in there that you don't need, and you're going to have to sprinkle it, you're going to have to build it, and it's going to cost you probably about 15% more in construction. So, I don't think that's ever going to happen. So, you, we have to be realistic in terms of goals and items we're going to have to deal with, and--
Thirty seconds.
Huh?
Thirty seconds left, sir.
Thirty seconds?
Yes.
Oh, my God. I, I guess, I guess at this point, I would say defer your decision, because I think there's enough unknowns in both sides, planning and Mr. Oyer, that somehow, we got to get those two groups together and come up with some kind of compromise position. That, that's really, that's where I come from tonight. You know, we're, we're not there yet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Ma'am, what's your name?
Shirley Herman.
One moment, please. Can we have behind Ms. Herman, Mary Churchill, and Allison Amalia? And then on this other podium, if we could have Will Davis and Anthony Mordaya at 443 33rd Street. Okay, ma'am, if you could--
Okay. My name is Shirley Herman, and I just want to point out that a 397-foot building will make it the tallest in West Palm Beach. And we, right now, where we live, I live in West Palm Beach, I live in, in, in Portofino, which is a 15, 10-story building, and we are the tallest thing in, in Northwood. So, I, I wonder why we should go from 10 stories to 397 stories. We moved in, my wife and I moved to West Palm Beach 20 years ago, and across from Portofino were some nice mango trees that have since gone, a couple of small buildings that have been torn down. I mean, and then now we have, first, a dirt pit, and now we have green grass, which is nice, and some broken sidewalk. So, I mean, in 20 years, we haven't seen anything, and now, suddenly, we're getting a city. Why? I mean, what's wrong with a smaller, smaller piece-by-piece development, rather than suddenly the tallest building in West Palm Beach and the second tallest building in West Palm Beach? It doesn't make sense to me. For 20 years, we had nothing, and now, all of a sudden, we're going to have a solid wall one way or another? Whether it's tall or if it's flat and broad, it's still so different from what we've had for 20 years. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. All right. Would you like to come forward here, please?
Sure. No more. Good evening. Thank you. Will Davis and I have a dual role in this, as I am not only a resident in Old Northwood, but I am also a merchant in Northwood Village, and I am the president of the Northwood Village Merchants Association. Finally, the village has finally got to see somewhat of a silver lining in our area. We get, see to the west, we see the anchor site, which is chugging along, we see Curry Park, which is going to finally put not only West, the North End, but the city of West Palm Beach in the spotlight to make it a destination for everyone to come and see what Curry Park is going to be. All the empty parcels that sit right in front of Curry Park and, but up against the village are almost an eyesore. It almost looks like it should just be, make it a graveyard, put dead bodies in there, because it's all it has been for the past couple of years. You don't have the opportunity to see that this is going to be truly a waterfront destination property for all these buildings. The density that we need in the North End, for us, the merchants, is crucial. We cannot survive strictly on the small amount of the residents who are to the north of us or those who come to visit the village. So, by increasing the density with the anchor site and the proposal of these buildings that will come, is only going to make it that much more easier for people to come and visit the shops, eat at the restaurants, and partake in the nightlife that Northwood Village has been known to, which has come to be known. So, I just ask you to consider this. I know there's a lot of tweaking that can be done. The Northwood Road can literally extend to Curry Park, making it just a walkability. Imagine coming from Curry Park, going all the way through the, through the historic district of the village, and ending up over at the anchor site. So, all this can be done, and I hope that you consider this. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And your name, ma'am?
My name is Mary Churchill. I'm a resident of the Portofino. I will keep this very brief, because people have said a lot of what I wanted to say. I just wanted to say that I was at the presentation in April of 2019 by Mr. Green and was one of the most enthusiastic members of, of the audience. I write a newsletter for the Portofino, and I gave it front-page coverage with pictures and so on. And the one thing that disturbed me and others in our building was the 38-story that was proposed at each end of the vacant area. Now, we're back to something like that, 38 and 40. Everything else about the presentation was really exciting. For him to bring in Herzog and de Moron was really a wonderful vision, and I thought, if that could be in our neighborhood, this is really a home run. But what is excessive is 397 feet. It's just going to stick, it's going to look like the middle finger of your hand sticking up there.
I hope the record reflects that she--
And two of them.
Hold on.
Sorry. I'll do this.
It's half a peace sign.
So, I, I just beg you, there must be something between 15 stories and, and 40, or 397 feet, excuse me, that you can find. Please delay your decision tonight. There's too much controversy. There are too many unsettled and unanswered questions. We want Jeff Green, if he can. If not, maybe other developers. Look, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's not going to sit there forever. I'm sorry. There will be some developer done. I wish it could be Jeff Green. I wish it could be Herzog and de Moron, but we cannot have that excessive height. Find some compromise and come back, and let us have another hearing and, and your thoughtfulness. And I really thank you for this. I see how much work and thoughtfulness has gone in from the planning board and, and from you all, and this is really a remarkable thing, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. Anthony Marola, president of Old Northwood. And a lot's been said here tonight, but we're not here, and the fact is, I hear a lot about, you know, it's a small town, it's a historical area, but we can't have anything that's going to match that. These houses and homes were built almost 100 years ago. We need something that brings us into where downtown is, where the South End is. We've been overlooked for years. My wife and I purchased a house here five years ago in Old Northwood, with the hope and the belief and all of the meetings that we've gone to prior to building a house or renovating a house, because of the hope and where the development was going to be. And it was like a carrot that's-- And it was like a carrot that's constantly being dangled in front of us. And we keep feeling that we keep getting overlooked. You know, we went to that meeting two years ago. We love the design, we love what Mr. Green brought in as far as an architect. It wasn't just block buildings, it brought more nature, more light, and connecting, you know, Curry Park through the village, through the town, hopefully ending up at an anchor site, which we hope gets developed sooner or later. But we need that. The one thing we ask of you is that, number one, if anything is proposed, a pedestrian walkway and non-vehicle traffic area needs to happen, number one. Number two is, we need staff in the city to work with developers, whether it's Mr. Green or anybody else. We have to work together on this, and the incentives have to be better for somebody to come in and develop. We've given a lot of leeway to some of the downtown city development that's been there, but again, we fight over little things here on the north end, and we keep getting overlooked. We need to see this developed, we need to have and move into the century that we're in right now. So I'm hoping you guys can work with them and push this along as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Is anyone else's name I called already? Please come forward. And before you begin, if we could please have Mary Theresa Delete at that one, David Ray, and then Amy Sunny behind her. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Allison Almeida, and my husband and I just moved to Northwood Shores. We bought a little fixer-upper mid-century, two and a half years ago now. We actually moved from Miami Beach, and we lived in South Beach for about 20 years before making the jump up here to West Palm. And I think one of the issues, I think one of the reasons why we left South Beach is we kind of had a very bohemian, kind of artsy community when we first moved there, and then it just started being developed in such a way that it wasn't as thoughtful as it should have been, and there was a lot of traffic and more people, and I just felt like everything was on top of each other. So there is, we're definitely pro-development. We want to see some exciting architecture in the area. I think Herzog and de Moron is an amazing architecture team, and I'm very happy with their work. I think their vision is beautiful, but it also has to be in scale to the community and in scale to the neighborhood. And building lot line to lot line is really going to be the worst thing that could happen, because it will take away all of the kind of like open space and beautiful kind of greenery that we have right now. But the height that's being proposed is just, I think, in my opinion, just way too high, and there's got to be a compromise between the two. My background is in design, interior design, architecture, and there's going to be a great compromise, and hopefully it will happen sooner than later. But it's just the way that we are looking at, I think as a community, looking at the height that's being proposed is the main issue, and the main, kind of like, I guess, you know, that people are not excited about the height. But the architecture, I think, is beautiful, and I think the use of green space and the pedestrian walkway is also really exciting and wonderful, and there's a great way to incorporate a better scale for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Mary Theresa Delitt. I live at 328th Street in West Palm Beach. I moved into the north, Old North, excuse me, the Northwood Shores neighborhood in 2014, just at the same time the redevelopment, excuse me, the rezoning was occurring in Seamud. And I was a little bit disturbed that there was some redevelopment. But over this period of time, from 2014, 2021, that's seven years, we keep seeing ingrandism in this rezoning. And I'm really, I really feel that Mr. Green bought this property with eyes wide open. He's a businessman, he knows that it's taking time to get the right atmosphere, shall we say, the economic atmosphere, to develop this. And he keeps dangling the possibility that, well, you know, maybe if you do this or that. I think all these incentives, to me, it sounds like bribery. You do this, I'll give you this, tit-for-tat. And that's not the way we should run our community. I'm also very active with the sustainability in West Palm Beach, and I do not see the fingerprints of the wonderful sustainability department on these plans. And I really wish that there would be more opportunity for them to observe, you know, as people are saying, the climate change, as well as transportation. And that will be, that is something that has not been mentioned to any great extent either. Concurrentcy is really an important factor in development in a community, and I don't see it in these plans. So I'm asking you to defer it, give the community an opportunity to do a real seminar, charrette, whatever, and then let's come back and make the decisions. But right now, it's unfair to us as a neighborhood, it's unfair to the city of West Palm Beach. Thank you very much.
Please proceed, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Ray. I appreciate all of you being here. Village, community, neighborhood. That's the words that I'm hearing from people who actually live there and have vested interests. Follow the money. Outside of two or three homeowners, all of the people who have a vested interest in this development are pushing for this to happen. Now, if you've heard the people who live here, they've asked you to postpone this decision, and give a little bit more, or get a little bit more feedback from the people that live there. Where is the conscious capitalism? I'm very sorry if you made a very bad business decision and purchased a home that you didn't get the return you're looking for. That's your fault. That's not our fault. We're not asking people to keep buildings in accordance with 100-year-old architecture. Paint lights, envisioning of what the community wants, can bring us to a halfway point. But I don't see how pushing this forward is giving the city anything of what it needs. Have you asked anyone in the city what they need, what they want? This is, no one cares about this, except the people who have a vested financial interest in this. The people who care about their community have said things like affordable housing. I'm sorry if this is not riveting for you, sir. They need affordable housing. We need more resources in our community, and I'm sorry, yes, we do want to feel good, because when we feel good, things happen. You say, no, no. But when we come into crisis points in our community, because we've ignored the majority of our community, we wonder why things fall on their face. So I don't think it's a ridiculous request to ask you to just postpone this, and speak to people who do not have a financial interest in the development of this area in this high-rise sense. Everyone wants development, because no one wants stagnation. But there's a way we can do it that benefits the members of our community, the traffic this is going to bring, the pollution this is going to bring. Where are these people going to go? But you know that it's going to raise your property value. There are other ways that you can make money, but I'm sorry, when we keep hearing about money versus people, people versus profits, the history books and the records keep the score. And I just don't think it's okay to listen to people who have said that they've been there for decades, and just ignore them, so that we can pay attention to people who don't care about this community. Jeff Green doesn't care about this community, he cares about his pockets. That's a fact. My opinion, but it's a fact. So if you listen to the people who actually care, they're not even saying, no, they're saying, give us some time to work together. And I don't think that's unreasonable. But I do think we have a history of ignoring people that live in communities, and focus on the people that pay. And it does feel like, the layman that I am, it does feel tit-for-tat. It does feel like incentives. So I'll end on that, but I'm begging you, please, listen to these people, because they use important words like village, community, neighborhood. And those feel-good buzzwords, they matter. That's what brings people together, and that's what keep us safe, not the overdevelopment of our land. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Sunny, and I'm a resident of Northwood Shores, a board member for the Northwood Shores Neighborhood Association, and I'm an AICP certified planner. But I'm here tonight as a very concerned resident, asking you not to approve this request. When my husband and I bought our home in 2013, the Seamud area had a maximum height of six stories. We had a reasonable expectation that this was how Seamud would develop. In 2014, as you've heard, the code was amended to more than double the allowable height to 15 stories, and this was done in the name of spurring development. Now in 2021, we are again looking at a request that doubles the allowable height to 397 feet, and changes the potential urban mixed-use character of this area. I ask each of you, would you want a 397-foot-tall building at the entrance to your neighborhood? Do you find this compatible with a primarily one- and two-story residential area? My answer is that I do not. The cases before you tonight require you to consider Code Section 94-32, the rezoning and amendment standards. In particular, I'd like to address Standards 2, 7, and 8. Standard number 2 relates to changed conditions. And since 2014, I would say that real estate and development has been slowly increasing, and rapidly increasing in the past year. People are moving to West Palm, real estate is at a premium, and there is demand for a development just like what is currently allowed. Standard number 7 relates to property values, and I have grave concerns over how a potentially 397-foot-tall building will affect my property values as a nearby resident. And standard number 8, whether the proposal results in an orderly and logical development pattern, and identify any negative effects on such pattern. If you look not just at the land covered by Seamud, but at the larger surrounding areas, the character is largely one- and two-story residential structures, some low-rise commercial structures in Northwood Village, and some approximately 10-story condo buildings. In my analysis of order and logic, I can possibly see a case to be made for the current Seamud regulations to be compatible, if not pushing the envelope, particularly if the design is thoughtful. But I cannot see how a potentially 397-foot-tall building is orderly, logical, or compatible. The extreme height, mass, bulk, and general design is not compatible with the local development patterns, or the intended mixed-use, urban, walkable, activated, eyes-on-the-street character long envisioned for this area. And I'll just add that Clemata Street, which we all know and likely enjoy, is largely mid-rise, property-line-to-property-line development, which you've heard concerns over tonight. Please do not force this incompatible design on our community. Please do not approve the changes presented before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If we could hear from James Xline and Scott Collison on this podium, and then Brian, excuse me, Naval and Homer, if you wish to be heard, you'll be the last card, if you wish to come forward. So any of those people I just called, are they still present? Please proceed, sir.
Oh, hello. Good evening. I apologize for not being prepared. I received the email on this petition about 7 o'clock, and rushed down here, because I was so concerned. I had to read it two or three times to decide, is this for real? This area went through extensive public review, staff review, coming up with the concept for Curry Park, and the parkland development. And at that time, you know, six stories was what we thought was compatible. And we did land trades with the children's services, and we created a public square. So there was a lot of thought that was put into this area, and the community said, you know what? Six stories? That's enough. What I see today is something that would be in a central business district, downtown. And you want height downtown, because you need to have mass. You need to have people, so they can walk, they're not required to have an automobile, they're not, there's alternative ways of transportation, trolleys, et cetera, et cetera. It's a downtown. And you need that level of intensity. This is not downtown. This is nothing even close to a central business district. This is, like people have said, a village. And this is, I probably go there two or three times a week, and it's quaint, you could ride your bike there, you could, there's always adequate parking. You put something like this there, you will destroy this area. Not only the neighborhoods, but the villages. And, you know, everybody has worked so hard to bring this area back, and it devastates me. And I have over 30 years' experience of urban planning, and if you asked me to write a recommendation, and come up with an approval recommendation, I couldn't do it. No way could I justify a 40-story building here.
Thirty seconds.
So, again, I just wanted to put my position, that I don't believe this is compatible. I keep hearing compromise. My concern is, developers tend to ask for 40 stories, but they really want 20 stories, so they negotiate from 40 to 20. But anything over 10 stories, I think you're going to have a really major compatibility issue.
And Jim, if you don't mind, could you state your name for the record? We didn't get to...
James Xline.
Thank you so much. All right.
Good evening. My name is Scott Collison, and I live on 35th Street in Northwood Shores. In my professional life, I work for a local architecture firm. In that capacity, I routinely have to consider issues of height, massing, scale, and design compatibility. As I look at the images presented here tonight, and consider the concepts of scale and compatibility, it is very clear to me that this proposal does not fit those concepts. Further, the Herzog and de Moron proposal images seen in 2019, and again tonight, do not accurately and fully represent the dramatic impact that a development of this height and scale will have on our community. I, like most, would like to see compatible, appropriate development in the Seamud area that will respect and enhance the north end. I do not believe the proposal before you tonight does that. As a side note, there is some development that has occurred under the 2014 Seamud Code, a four-story mixed-use 100-unit development by Mr. Kozakoff. Somehow, at a scale that is compliant with current zoning, he was able to make the economics work. This is an important area, and it is important to get this development right, as it is unlikely to be redeveloped again if we later decide it was too big and too much for this location. Please do not support this incompatible proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Adel. I live in Northwood Shores. I'm also on the Northwood Shores Board. I'm also in the development industry. I work for one of the largest developers in the country, dealing with pre-construction and getting developments from plans through construction. We're not going to convince you tonight, everyone has opinions, obviously, on what should and shouldn't be out here, but I think there are a couple of points to set straight, and provide another perspective, and then ask you a couple requests here, based on what Carl's already elaborated on. A couple of counterpoints. As far as the increase in property values, I would encourage everyone to look at Zillow over the past 12 months, or whatever database you want to look at. I've had realtors knocking on my door, several of them, over the past few months. Property values have unquestionably doubled, if not tripled, in Northwood alone. With the influx of the city's focus on the Northwood Village and Curry Park, what we have, obviously, I think is apparent to everyone, including Jeff Green's team, is that that parcel is in a really unique situation right now. It's very, it's a critical piece of land for the city. We've talked about it in the past, that there's really no other piece of land like that, that large, at that much of a juncture, in very many other populated districts around the country. So Jeff Green, we're speaking about him primarily because he's a 50% owner of that land. He has a huge opportunity right now to be a hero, frankly. So, you know, I'm certainly, I'm not asking to, you know, shoot down this development. We're not asking for you to shoot down the development. What we're asking you is to reconsider the input you've gotten from the community, based on the meetings that have been held. We're asking you to hold a meeting in Northwood, remove as many barriers as possible to get the most accurate read from the participants. It's sometimes hard to get down here, there's a lot of people who may not have cars, their opinions still matter. And the third thing that we're asking you to do is let's get an accurate massing, since there seems to be some, just some... there seems to be some dissent as far as their massing versus our massing, what's correctly represented. Let's get a correct representation of what the project that's proposed is. Again, you know, 397 feet is a very real number. It doesn't take abstraction to understand what that is when you put it in context of 120-foot Portofino Towers directly across the street. You know, if you live in the North End and you've been waiting years for a 400-foot building...
30 seconds.
Thank you. You purchased the wrong neighborhood, frankly. That's not what that neighborhood is there for. So, you know, I'll wrap it up. But basically, we're encouraging you to let Mr. Green and others develop. We want to see that happen. I think there is a path forward to bridge the gap between the village that we love and want to maintain, and a future that is West Palm Beach in the Northwood End that is profitable for everybody. We just encourage you, please reconsider, and let's do this responsibly.
Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak, who I have not called? If so, now's the time to come forward. And if not, we will conclude the public hearing portion. Mr. Green, something you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I can, I'd just like to address some of the comments that were made, just to clarify for the record. But again, just for the board's edification, there were comments made about the concern about public facilities and traffic. And again, we're not proposing to change anything that was adopted in 2014. So all of that infrastructure, all of that analysis regarding construction, public facilities, solid waste, that has all been analyzed dating back to 2014, and nothing is changing there. Mr. Flick mentioned that the workforce housing requirement was 0.2%. That's not, that's not correct. He didn't understand the incentive. The incentive is either 5, 10, 15, or 20% of the total amount of units. There's a formula that you transcribe to get to the height. So it's 5 to 20% of the total buildings and residential units in the building. Ms. Wagner expressed a concern about flooding and sea level rise. As this board may be aware, we adopted a form board ordinance several years ago, which requires that if you are in a floodplain, you have to raise your building two feet. So any development that comes in is already required to do that. In addition, we've been working with the county, and we have challenged some of the FEMA determinations that were made. We are challenging some of the map analysis that had been done. We're part of a community rating system that we've been making improvements to the way we do our plan review and some of the measures that we implement downtown, which has resulted in a lower insurance rating for all of the residents in the city. So we're going to continue to do that, and we are appealing FEMA's latest map revisions because we didn't think they were accurate. Mr. Parsons mentioned the meeting that we had on April 5. I attended that meeting as well, and I was going to point out, when Harvey mentioned 100 people, it was clearly a couple hundred people. And as was mentioned by several people, the sentiment seemed to be that they wanted to move forward with the proposal that was discussed tonight. With regard to the Bristol, again, I'm not making any comparison between the Bristol and anything that could be built in sea mud. And the point I was making is that the percentage increase in a lower-placed home in a high-rise tower is less than certainly what you would get on, let's say, the top five floors. And that was the 155% increase in value I was trying to relate to. There was a comment made that Portofino was the tallest building in Northwood, but as Mr. Harvey alluded to, the Reibovich project consists of six towers. 30 stories is the maximum height of those six towers. The first two towers are under construction now. It's called Marina Village, consisting of 399 units. So again, that's an area that's just located a little bit further to the north. I don't, I take exception to the comment made that this is bribery with incentives. Again, the whole point of what we're trying to do with the additional height is to provide something that's going to benefit the residents. That was the whole intent of what we were doing. Transportation to management, man strategies, mobility issues, those were all contained within the incentives that we were offering. And then lastly, again, I wanted to show this graphic because the comment was made that a 397-foot-tall building is not compatible with a one- and two-story. And we wholeheartedly agree with that. The whole purpose of having a transition district and an edge district is to transition to the single-family neighborhoods that are located to the north. We don't envision, for instance, a 397 buildings, a tall building next to, you know, a one- or two-story building just to the west or to the south. That's why, there's a reason that these are buffered by a Core 2 district, a transition district, and ultimately, an edge. So, Mr. Chair, to cut to the chase, what really lies before us is you've got a lot of residents here that oppose the 397-foot height. Two years ago, we had 200 people wholeheartedly endorsing the 397-foot height. This was actually a taller, the majority, the majority of the people.
Excuse me, quiet, please. He's speaking. We've all been listening to each other patiently. It's, Mr. Green is...
So the challenge we have is that you've got a developer on one hand, who has been purchasing property in this district from 2012 to 2016, not moving forward with a 15-story height restriction. You've got residents saying that we should limit the development height to 15 stories. So what's going to give? Something has to give, because otherwise, Mr. Green is going to say, 15 stories doesn't work for me. He's had property for seven to nine... Excuse me, excuse me, please.
Please, excuse me. This is a proceeding we're doing. We each gave everyone...
You're giving the ability to retort us, and we don't get the ability to...
Okay. Sir, we listened to you when it was your turn to speak. Extend the same courtesy.
And we do not get a chance to retort you.
Extend the same courtesy. Thank you, sir. You have a good evening. Continue, Mr. Green.
So that's the challenge. So again, we brought these issues to the commission in February of this year. We asked for direction. With that direction, we're bringing this amendment to you. But at the end of the day, I don't know how you resolve the fact that some people want 15 stories, and you've got a developer who's saying that 15's not going to work for them. They can't make a profit on the deal.
Thank you, sir. All right. At this point, we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion. And I think what I'd like to do is just kind of go down the row and ask people's initial thoughts. And Peter, I'll begin with you.
Really?
Yeah. To my left, and then I'll go to John, and then Deborah. And I'll save to our newest board member, let her go last. I'll go last, but go ahead. Peter, your thoughts?
To me, this is a little bit like déjà vu, the last time we went through an extensive incentive program. We all found it to be very difficult to grasp. I think even I, as a professional architect, find, I had to spend a lot of time trying to understand the incentives and what the implications were on each particular area, the transition, the Core 1, Core 2. And frankly, I think what's missing here is graphics. There's a total lack of graphic understanding of what is being proposed. I think that if the community were able to understand it visually, it may be more sellable than simply with 397 feet. What does that mean? Yes, it's not 13 feet floor-to-floor. It's rarely nine or 10 feet maximum. Developers understand incentives, but I don't think the local community understands it. I think the massing studies have to be looked at lot by lot, and I would suggest that if there are big developers in the area, maybe they like to split the cost of the city, 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, and come up with, you know, a simple massing plan for the neighborhood. You can even make a little styrofoam model. Doesn't cost that much money for the community to understand what's being proposed. It would include all the setbacks that you are requesting, denying the false impression that the buildings are going to go property line to property line. We know that's not going to happen. I think that the city needs to do a little bit more graphic studies.
Thank you. John, can we have your thoughts?
Well, I have a lot of notes.
I'll set the timer. Go ahead.
Great. Yeah, give me my three minutes. Well, first, I just want to compliment the staff. I'm a former planning director, and I know how challenging these types of cases can be, especially when people are so passionate on both sides, and it's a difficult place to find a place to stand. So I appreciate all of the work and thoughtfulness that has come forward from the staff, and I appreciate all of the input that we've gotten from everyone who came here. There's lots of different points of view, and that's what this forum is about. We're here to hear what you have to say. You know, when an email shows up in my mailbox and the headline is 397 feet, it's easy for me, as a planning board member in my own mind, to judge to my own, to rush to judgment, just like a lot of us do sometimes, when we don't get all of the facts. It was just two months ago, we were at a planning board, we were discussing a project in downtown St. Pete, where the discussion was increasing the height between Clematis and City Place. And our discussion was, this is the core. If there's a place where we're going to raise the height, this is the place to do it. And it was that kind of discussion that I felt really moved me to support it there. And here we have this sort of outlier piece of property. It's difficult to, you know, really where I come down on this is that I have a lot of issues with this, and I don't think I could support this this evening. And if we get to a point where there's a motion made, I'm not going to be supporting it because I'm going to, and I would provide the statements I need to make for the record to defend my position. But before we get to that, because I think there's going to be some other discussion about where we go on that, let me just share a few other things. And that's that what I think a lot of this comes down to is uncertainty. Maybe one of the reasons why people aren't developing in that area is because everybody knows that the game is in play, and maybe they should be holding on to their property and wait to see what happens before they make their move. Seems like there's been a discussion going on for several years now, and I just know from my own experience that that's what's happened, that's what happens in the development game. When somebody puts something on the table and says, we're going to substantially increase development potential, then people aren't so moved to make things happen. They want to see what, you know, what the game is going to be at the end. I think the neighborhood has uncertainty because, well, really, you know, when we approve a zoning change, it puts one more entitlement. When the city does, it puts one more entitlement in place, and it makes harder to say no. And they don't get the graphics, they don't get the picture, they don't see how even possibly a 397-foot-tall building might fit in perfectly with just the right plan. I think there's also uncertainty... I know I'm past my three minutes, but let me... I think there's also uncertainty on the part of the city, because while I appreciate the incentives, I'm not sure that these incentives actually get the city what it wants at the end of the day. There's really no guarantee. It's somewhat uncertain, depending on what they choose from the menu. Like, for me personally, I would prefer some mandatory things that they have to choose from, like a Tier 1 option before they get to choose. You know, the things that are important to the city, like extending Northwood to make improvements to the park. Those are the things that benefit, because that's the trade-off. When cities work with landowners and developers to allow for, as Mr. Oyer said, to, you know, change the rules with the stroke of a pen, it's what the public gets in exchange for that. And that's what I don't see here in terms of certainty. And so whether it's a massing plan, or visioning, or maybe some more finely tuned incentives that mandate some of the things, because it concerns me when the person who's driving this comes into the room and says, and by the way, we don't even agree with the incentives, and we're going to threaten a Burt Harris claim. Like, that makes me not even want to touch what's on the table and live with what we already have. So those are just some of the thoughts that I have. I think this is a great starting point for this discussion. I think there are lots of good ideas here. And ultimately, I think the perfect plan is probably out there that meets everybody's needs. But we're not even in agreement coming into the room here today, and I'm just not comfortable with that. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, John. Deborah?
Okay, I have several comments about this proposal. And one of the things that John mentioned, that I put down in my notes, was that the developers, the landowners, and the city, we have to come together on this. As I sat here and listened, I tried to put myself in the place of the residents in Northwood. And I've lived here a long time, and I've seen those plots remain vacant, sat here in this position, and seen proposals before the land was purchased, and nothing happened. And I cannot imagine living in a neighborhood where the development has been lacking. I believe as far as incentives has been mentioned, it needs to be a trade-off with incentives and requirements. I cannot see moving forward with this proposal tonight, because I see there's a lack of trust from the owners, you know, with the city and the developers. And I think that there's going to have to be a meeting of all three minds, so that we can come together and get this project done. The project is needed. I do support that we do need a project, but, you know, the 397 feet, the over 30 floors is a little daunting for me as well. However, I do want to thank the planning staff, you know, for their research, extensive research, and the presentation this evening. I think we have to go back, go to the table and negotiate. I listened to the residents talk about the last meeting, and while it was well-attended, I guess many of the ideas were not taken into consideration. Bottom line is that the development in that area is much needed. We still need to maintain as much green space as possible. And I was, almost had a question about the floodplain, but Rick explained that, that they have to raise it two feet before they start construction. But bottom line is, I don't feel like I'm in a position to approve this this evening without it going back for more reconsideration, negotiation with the owners, sit down with the developers and the city.
Thank you. Kathleen?
All right. I don't want to, I have a ton to say, but most of it actually has kind of already been covered by the rest of the board, so I'll just be short in the sense that I mirror the graphics concern when it comes to seeing something from Northwood Village and looking at it and actually understanding the height variation, because I think when you hear 300-something feet, you're automatically, it's just, it's awestrucking. And so in that standpoint, to go to your point, that maybe it could potentially be included in our community at a different standpoint later on the road, if people understood it, that's a potential that should be discussed. I hope that the staff considers that lead certification point for Silver, if that's something that a developer needs, other than just focusing on Green's development, that should be considered. Overall, this was made for one developer, and he did present it to the community. I was at that community meeting, and it did mirror what exactly our community members were saying. There was a lot of approval, and maybe there were people in that room that didn't want to speak up, or saw that a majority of their community members really supported it, or maybe they had to take it in more and understand it, and that's why they're coming here. I can't really understand that huge discrepancy between the people in that room that night and the people here tonight, other than, I think my biggest issue is Mr. Oyer coming up and basically having, overall, stating that, hey, they haven't hit the mark on even what we want. Northwood Road is a huge issue that needs to be dealt with, if it's utilities issues and things like that, that the city has claimed before, that the developer is saying, no way. That's a big problem. That needs to be discussed. So I actually can't believe that we've gotten to this point, and you have a representative of the developer basically saying, we didn't approve of this, and the incentives are confusing. So overall, it's disappointing, because I do conceptually think that if we got another community meeting, you would have a lot of support for that development, specifically because they want to see a development and they want something to happen. But I also think you'd have another community meeting where you'd have, if these people came, really two sides of the story. Sorry.
Making your point.
Yeah. And that's, you know, where are you going to go from there? You have a community meeting where half the room is saying, no, 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 and half the room is saying, yes, yes, yes. You guys have to come together and figure out a path that's a way forward that, where you're not having the developer's representative coming up and saying the things that he said. So, yeah.
I'll add my own comments now. First, I want to thank the people who came out today. You clearly care about your neighborhood greatly, you care about the city. We may not always agree on everything, but your passion, your commitment's clear and evident, and I thank you for that. I also want to thank the city staff, because I think they're on the right track. Something needs to be done to have this property developed. It may not be this plan, but something needs to be done that makes sense, economic sense, or it will never happen. We'll be back here seven years from now, bemoaning the fact that nothing has happened again, and your community deserves better than that. Having said that, like everyone, I am concerned about the size. I am concerned by how much it has increased. I am concerned, as some of my...
how much it has increased. I am concerned, as, as some of my board members have commented, on the apparent, we don't seem to have consensus even between the staff and the property owner, let alone the community. So we have three different interests here, none of which are in harmony right now. I do think you're on the right track. You know, one suggestion I have for staff, we keep talking about incentives. You know, if you do this, we'll give you more floors. If you do this, we'll give you more floors. Maybe the community would, would trade off those incentives. We'll give up on affordable housing. We'll give up on some of these other parts of the city to have a lower building. You know, that's, that the community's desire on the height is one of those trade-offs that we should maybe be giving more weight to. But I, I think, though, I would urge this community, work with these people, because at the end of the day, the things you want most for your community, you cannot get unless some of these things get developed, until you increase the population. That will support the things you care about, things whether it's restaurants, or, or shops, or grocery store, or more people there that will help reduce crime. There's a lot of good things that will come with more people living in your community, and you need to find a way to make it work for the developer as well as for yourselves. So I think we're all seemingly to be in consensus that we like the general idea of where this is going, want to encourage the city to continue that. Obviously, the owner, I think the, you know, Mr. Oyer made some, I think, very legitimate points that I would love to see fleshed out with the staff. Love to hear the staff's response. I know a lot of this you just heard for the first time this evening, and that's hardly fair. But if that could be worked out, and obviously to engage the community, as Kathleen pointed out, we know that there are people in your community who really want something like this, too. And we need to find a way where it makes sense for everyone. I think we're on the right track. I think we're all, we're not there tonight. Is that a fair statement?
Mm-hmm.
So what kind of motion do we want? I hate just to have a motion that votes it down, because I don't think that's our view here. We're certainly not going to approve it today, but I meant-
I would suggest that we do a motion to refer it back to the staff.
What are your thoughts?
We could do anything. Make it, ignore it. We-
We could do anything.
That's, that's the thing. What is our limitation as far as what, what-
I, I think Mr. Thomas, who's our, who's the, the gold standard on questions like this, we're fortunate to have him. And so, Mr. Thomas, the question is, what can we do? If, if the consensus is, we like the directions going, we recognize there's some problems, we don't think we're here that yet, what, what's your suggestions to us?
The request before you is for an amendment to one section of the code, and for rezoning for certain, certain parcels in the area. Your decision on both of those is whether the evidence presented to you tonight meet the standards for granting it. If it met the standards, then it's entitled to approval. If it didn't, it can be disapproved. Now, you do have some other options. If you would like additional information, you can direct staff as to what you would like for them to bring back, and bring it back to you for consideration.
I think Mr. Green may have a suggestion for us.
Along the lines of, of Mr. Thomas's recommendation, the board can direct us to bring this back in two months. That would give us time to try to work out the issues between now and then, per Mr. Thomas's direction, if you could provide a specific direction. Because our challenge is going to be, again, what I'd mentioned earlier, the discrepancy between what the developer is seeking and, and what the residents in this room, majority of the residents feel.
Let me take a stab at, not a motion, but just to flesh it out. Do we all agree that, that number, not in any order, but we want to see some of the issues raised between the developer and the staff to be resolved? So that would be helpful. And number two, we want some of the issues with the community addressed, I think most particularly the height, especially the height. Are there some other things someone add to just the discussion, so we could formulate a motion?
Well, I, I think the staff is aware of what the issues are.
I think he's asking for a little bit of direction. Do you feel comfortable?
I, I think so. Again, we, we will reach out. I don't want to put Mr. Oyer on the spot, but, you know, earlier I had asked him, is, is Mr. Green willing to consider a lesser number than 397? Again, I don't want to put him on the spot today, but that's the question we will pose to him. Again, keep in mind that in February of this year, the commission directed staff to move forward-
I understand. Mr. Green, you were acting consistent with your instructions from the city commission. We understand that. And I-
We'll go back, we'll go back to Mr. Green and ask if he's willing to consider a lesser height. And then we will address some of the other issues, and, and talk specifically about Northwood Road and the incentives.
Am I allowed to make another comment? Or no?
Just, it sounds like-
Am I allowed to make another comment, or are we done?
Of course. Yeah, we're so discussing-
I would just say, I, I guess my point is, is that it's not just one developer in there. It's not just one parcel of land. And I, I think that it not, it's not just going back to green. It's, it's having a, a, you know, holistic view of, hey, how do we want this entire district to look? There was a representative from another developer here as well, who had commentary. So I would say, if we made the motion, it's to go back to the multiple developers within that area to discuss options. And again, I, I don't want it to be, hey, this developer, what is he not going to, what is he willing to give us, and then let's make our code based off of that.
I, I agree. But, but I do think, though, if, if part of, if part of our goal, and I think we have a lot of conflicting goals we're trying to harmonize, part of our goal is to see some development there. So if we know there's something that's a deal killer for the developer, we, we should know about that. I'm not saying we're going to vote for it, but we need that information. And right now, there, there's not even consensus between staff and developer, let alone the community.
Right.
So, so I think the, we have to find a way that makes it work. And then I think, I think we need more interaction with the community to see if there's support for it. And not that any one of those things will be governing, but these are all important factors for us. So your point's well-taken, though. It shouldn't be a single developer. But I think part of what we want to do here is we don't want to fail as, as past efforts have failed, where we come up, we think of these good ideas, and nothing happens. And years pass, and nothing happens. And years pass, and nothing happens. So part of what we need to know when we reconvene, will this work? Will this allow something to happen? Will it work with the community?
Point taken.
Now, if you come up with a motion that says all that, I'd be most grateful.
I'll give it a shot.
I'd like to move that case number 1859 A and B, be referred back to staff with a response slash solution by the end of September or sooner, based on the comments raised at the meeting tonight, and include meetings with developers and the community.
Absolutely.
That's second.
Okay. We have a motion second. Any further discussion of this particular motion? John or Kathleen, any amendments you want to the motion, or it works for you?
No, I think it's broad enough to, I think it's broad enough to capture it all.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and second. I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you for coming. All right. We're almost done here on ours. Let's see. Next, our agenda, our co-revision cases, of which there are none. We move to other business, unfinished business, new business, anything else. We stand adjourned.